The Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where Section 2.2, 37a b of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies.
And two, only public business matters as to identified motion can be postponed. We're very concerned. Thank you very much.
Second?
Is there a second?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Highland.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Rastnik.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Aye.
And Ms. Wadiska.
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you like the latest in the pledge allegiance this evening?
Yeah, we would love so.
Okay. Start it up. All right, you started it up. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. You guys did a good job. Yeah. No. Oh, that's one reason I'm on the school board. It's just so much.
I thought you meant television.
No. No. All right. This evening, as a point of personal privilege, we're going to recognize my colleague, Joan Wadiska, to make a few comments before we move on to the adoption of the agenda and the business of the meeting. Joan?
Thank you very much. This evening, I have some bittersweet news that I'd like to share with the board as well as the public. The board has been shared with, has received the following information, but at this time, I certainly want to advise the public. For nearly a quarter of my life, it's been my privilege to serve on the, to serve the students and the community as an elected member of the Falls Church City School Board. I remain humbled and honored by the unwavering support that I've received from citizens and staff to serve our community. But with great sadness, however, I must tender my resignation from this school board effective tomorrow morning in order to accept an appointment with the State Board of Education. When I started on the school board, if a little girl like my daughter was in first grade, today she is in high school, and the Falls Church City School Board has been my passion, a labor of love, a blessed opportunity to make people's lives better. I love our schools, our staff, our engaged community. I even occasionally love city council. And I especially love our school board, our innovative, collaborative, push-the-envelope, no-holds-bar group. And I have dedicated myself, and this board has dedicated itself, to helping our students. Each member of this board and each member of our school staff here in the city of Falls Church believes that every single child, regardless of race or income, disability, language, or gender, and even zip code, should receive a world-class public education that prepares them for college or careers. And I am so proud that here in the city of Falls Church, we deliver on that vision. By working together, not accepting mediocrity, providing the necessary financial resources, and constantly pushing ourselves, the Falls Church City School Board and community have built and nurtured a culture of excellence and high expectations for every single student. And in doing so, we have set the pace for the Commonwealth as well as the nation. This work has been so important to each and every one of us, and it certainly has been quite important to me. A product of public education myself and public educators, I believe that public education can transform lives for the better. I believe that real political leadership means solving problems and not accepting the easy answers. And I believe in standing up and fighting for what's right, even when it is hard. And I wake up every morning believing that our best days are ahead of us if we are willing to work hard to make it happen. And for many years, these core values have gotten me through long nights and list budget sessions and led me to fight hard where others might have wanted to give up. And I know that this spirit of undaunted enthusiasm and optimism and perseverance pervades the school board. And I never regret fighting hard for our children, our schools, or our staff, or this community. And working together, we made what many times was told to be us as impossible to be possible. There are so many fond memories I have about our accomplishments, and they are many, and I won't go into all of those this evening. I've submitted just a handful of a few of my favorite moments in my letter of resignation to the school board. The most important thing I want to talk about are the people here. And I've often said that in the city of Falls Church, we don't have education programs. We have exceptional people. And it has been our people, the staff, the students, the parents, the community leaders, the school board, the planning commission, city council, our business leaders, our volunteers, the PTA, the community members, that fuel our success. And their effort, their stories, your innovations, your ideas, your struggles, your sacrifices, your day-to-day toil is what made us fight so hard for you. We have set some ambitious goals here in the city, and every single time, we somehow managed to meet, reach them. And when we do, we turn around and we say, what's next? And how can we do it better next time? That is the Falls Church way. In part due to this success, Governor McDonnell has graciously asked for my assistance, and he has appointed me to the State Board of Education. And I'm honored to serve the Commonwealth's children in this new capacity. However, I'm not permitted to continue service on my local board to accept it. And so tonight is my last meeting. I will deeply miss serving on the Falls Church City School Board. It has been a great joy to be part of this elite team. And I am so thankful for the blessing that has been in my life. In particular, I would like to call out a couple folks that deserve particular thanks. I'm thankful to my supporters and my campaign volunteers and the voters. Your letters, your calls, your kind words have carried me over the years. And I have had, and I have been the recipient of so much tremendous support. I'm particularly indebted to the recently passed Ed Straight and Betty Blystone and Carol DeLonge and Tom Clinton and Kathy Kay and Lou Alm and our PTA leaders who gave me my start. And I'm also grateful to this board, the past and the well as the current members. I thank this board for being bold, for working as a team, and forgiving of your time and talents. We have done so much. I particularly love that you are not satisfied. I love that about you. And I appreciate your impatience, especially when it comes to our children. And I am truly sorry that I won't be here for the next leg of your journey, particularly this year's budget, this budget debate. But I have every faith, and I have great peace, that whatever you do, it's going to be great, it will be bold, and it will put children first. I'm also thankful to our school staff, some of which are here this evening. Our school staff give so much of themselves through their sacrifices, their hard work, their love, their compassion, their perseverance. And they have chosen to dedicate their talents to children here in the city of Falls Church. And in doing so, they have become the heart of our schools. And I am particularly grateful to the steadfast leadership and passion and service of Dr. Tony Jones, our superintendent, Dr. Lois Berlin, Dr. Gloria Guba, Mr. Hunter Kimball, Marty Gudell. Thank you for everything you do. And lastly, I must recognize and thank my family and friends who have sacrificed so much so that I might serve others. For many years, this school board, your support, has given me a front row seat to see innovation and success in public education. And as a result, today, I am more hopeful and optimistic and excited than ever about the promise of public schools. These are very difficult times to be in elected office, and it is a very difficult time to be in public education. But there is a challenge and a precious opportunity for us to serve others. We stand at the helm of a new frontier in public education. The rules have yet to be written, the resources are always too scarce, and the future is a bit uncertain. But together, we must charge forward and raise our expectations that every child in the Commonwealth is provided the opportunity that we have delivered and created upon here in the city of Falls Church. As my guide, I take with me the Falls Church way. And you all know what that means. And more importantly, our shared expectation of world-class public schools. It has been my honor and privilege to serve you and our students and our staff, and I would thank you all for your support for so many years.
If the people in the audience can indulge us just a little bit more, some of Joan's friends and families are in the audience, and I'd like my colleagues here on the dais to have an opportunity to thank Joan and make any comments you'd like to make while those people are still here and can hear what Joan's colleagues have to say about her. So if we could just do that, I think that would be great. And if I could start maybe with the dean of the board, Kieran. You've been here longer than anyone else, and so we'll start with you and then go to Mr. Lawrence and then back down this way.
I'll try not to take too long, but Joan and I have served together for, I guess, the longest time of any other members of the board. And I do want to say that if you look at things like facilities, it stretches all the way back to the renovation of Mount Daniel, the addition of a new wing there. And now it is culminating with additions and renovations at Thomas Jefferson. And all of that time, there's been a tremendous strain on our budgets. And despite that, Joan found a way for us to get those things accomplished. Those are the most tangible accomplishments, I think, of this era. But what she's accomplished in terms of setting the bar high for each of us is an even greater intangible, I think. And not just for board members, but for the community at large. I was very pleased to be an observer, for the most part, of Joan's relationship with Betty Blystone. And I thought that Betty certainly exemplified the kind of leadership that this town gained a very, very, very worthy reputation for. Betty, as you may, may recall, some who haven't been here very long won't, but Betty was a member of the school, school board, a chair of the school board, and then a president of the V S B A, just as Joan became. And then went on to be a mayor here in Falls Church. And Betty continues to be a leader in the community. She spoke at the memorial for Ed Straight on behalf of the League of Women Voters. And that kind of, basically, lifetime commitment is something that Joan is following right along and setting that kind of bar for everyone in the community. From the oldest, perhaps like me, to Ava and Andrew down there in their seats. And so that, that's an intangible that just, you know, you can't, you can't put a price on that. But it's, it's something that we're all going to be indebted to for a long time. The governor and the Board of Education are gaining. We are losing to some extent, but I would say that there is a gain which we, which I anticipate we will receive from the continued excellent service that Joan will provide us from another angle in public education. She articulated very well tonight her ongoing commitment to public education, and I'm confident that we'll, we'll see the fruits of that in the, in the years to come. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence, do you have comments?
Well, I've certainly been on the board the shortest time with Joan, but certainly have worked with her long enough on enough issues. And Kieran's right. You have not only been incredibly dedicated to, you know, the schools, but to the city in general. And, you know, I've worked with you on, on planning issues, but I've talked to you about probably every single possible topic in the city. And one of the things I've always loved about you is, once you figure out what the right thing to do is, God help anyone who's in your way. Which, you know, some people look at it and go, you know, that's not a good thing. But it is. It's, you know, we do have the Falls Church way, which isn't necessarily the quickest way, but you've got to keep at it and keep at it, whether it's daycare or facilities. And, you know, the fact that, you know, you're sitting here on your last night talking about a capital improvement plan that, you know, is going to keep going for the next 15 years pretty much shows, you know, you're not actually going anywhere. We're going to keep doing your work for, for quite a while. And, you know, Kieran mentioned Russ and the kids. I've spent God knows how many hours, past midnight, up here at this desk with Russ. And it's, you know, it's both ways. I mean, you know, he helped you be able to have the time to do what you want, and, you know, you helped him to, you know, make it a full family effort, which, you know, is wonderful and rare. And you're not the only one who's had, you know, the planning commission suck away a spouse. But I'm just, I'm glad I know you're not going far, which is what I was worried about.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Castillo, any comments you'd like to make?
Well, as soon as I received the email from Joan informing us about her departure, I sent her a note telling her I thought she'd take the state board by storm, and I'm sure she will. I do want to pick up on, on what especially Kieran, but also John, touched upon. I think in this day and age, sometimes we focus, not exclusively, but a little on education as training workers for the future. And that's certainly important, but what I think is equally important, and I think Joan's example makes clear, is the importance of citizenship and commitment to the community. And I think we're going to be needing additional citizens in Falls Church to step up and take Joan's place and take other, other spots in, in our government. And I think Joan's example to the city is one of the best examples of what a good citizen can accomplish here, and I hope people will learn from that.
Thank you. Dr. Jones, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you for bringing me here because you were part of, you know, the committee, and you were the first person that had reached out by phone, and, and I've loved every minute of it. And, and thank you for allowing me also to get active with, with V S B A and some of the work at the state level. Because when you're new in a state, not only new in a position, but when you're new in a state, I think it's important that in my role, I be connected. And you've really helped me, I think, very quickly get connected with other superintendents and with the organizations that are so important, not only for me professionally, but so that I can make sure that I'm leading Falls Church in the right direction. So thank you. And I can't imagine what you are going to be like on the state board. Oh, my goodness. We're going to be calling when, when there's something that we're not real happy with so we know you can take on our charge.
That's right. That's right. Sure. I'd like to say thank you.
Well, you know, my fellow board members tend to speak a little more eloquently than I do, but I still want to say something on this occasion, and I wanted to share my thoughts. I'm very sad to say goodbye to my colleague, Joan Wadiska, today, but I wish her much success in her new position with the Virginia Board of Education. I feel this is a logical move for you, Joan, and I expect you to bring the same passion and enthusiasm to this new position that you've always brought to your post here in the Falls Church City School Board. Joan ran for reelection the year that I first ran for the school board, and she helped me navigate the campaign process as well as my first months on the board, once we were both elected, for which I'm eternally grateful. And I, as I said, I definitely see this as a logical move for Joan, but I don't think that you're going to stop at the Virginia Board of Education. I anticipate seeing you going further. I think you have such a bright future, and I know that we'll be hearing bigger things, you know, from you in the years to come, and I look forward to that. I, and I know my fellow board members, are going to miss you for many reasons. For me, especially your attention to and knowledge about policy and legislative issues. And I know that replacing you is going to be very difficult. But I'm glad to know that you're still around, and I look forward to seeing you in an unofficial capacity at school functions. And I also look forward to seeing many more photos of Ava and Andrew on Facebook in the coming years. And I just wish you the best, and please don't be a stranger. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Rastnik?
So Winston Churchill said that the price of greatness is responsibility. And make no mistake about it, we had greatness on this board and Joan. You may know people who know more about the substance of education, but I don't. You may know people who have a firmer and stronger work ethic, but I haven't met anyone. You may know people that are stronger advocates or fiercer fighters for their cause, but I don't know anyone that I've met that is. And so in these things, some of these gifts are God-given, and some of them are hard-earned, but they all are part of her greatness. And what I value most is that she recognizes that with that greatness comes responsibility. And it's a responsibility that she accepts. She's done it on this board for years. She did it as the president of the State School Board Association, something that you cannot imagine how much work that is. And now she's going to do it on the State Board of Education. And while you will be dearly missed, I value and appreciate the fact that even though you're very humble about your greatness, that you accept it and you accept the responsibility that comes with it. And so we expect great things from you. And we'll miss you.
Well, Joan, I won't miss you because I know just where to find you. And I know you're not going far. And, you know, I think that for this community, there's nothing better than to have an in at the state level, and, and I will consider it that way. Just a couple of things, Joan, first. Because they cannot speak, let me say on behalf of the parents in our community, the staff in our schools, our kids, and other community members, thank you. You have made a difference. And I know that for you, that's the important thing, is to make a difference. And so I want to recognize that. The second thing I want to do is let people know that over the past year, as a part of a program I participated in at the state level, I had an opportunity to travel our state to all seven regions, meeting with leaders in healthcare, education, economic development, government, and otherwise. And I have to say that Joan has a broad reputation around our state. Many places that I went, I met with the superintendent of schools, or with a teacher, or someone from a college/university, someone who was in local government, or just some member of a community who had had a chance because Joan visited a school in their area, or they had seen something from V S B A or otherwise to be touched by Joan, and you have left a broad footprint. And so congratulations to you for that. We will miss you. I will miss you. But, but I really am serious. We don't think you're going very far, and we will, we will call on you when we need to. And we hope that you will keep us in your thoughts. All right. It was fun. Getting back to the meeting, now that we had planned to have before Joan threw a wrench in our deal. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second? All in favor of adopting the agenda, please?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't hear any opposed. Public comments and requests. This evening, we have one slip for a public comment request from Joel Block. If you will approach the podium to speak, is, as we all know, this is a time when the school board listens. We don't respond, and you will have three minutes, please, to share your thinking with us. Mr. Block?
Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to the public comments. And thank you, Joan, for everything that you've done for us as teachers and people who work in our schools. You really have been a phenomenal person to work with. I'm just coming to you today to talk to you about the recommendations that are coming today from Peak, from SEEK, from EAK, and how important they are. We've really come into difficult times as teachers over the last few years. Economically, it's been a difficult time for everyone. But we've been faced with a greater challenge, the challenge of deciding how many hours of our time we can actually continue to spend working on our classrooms, working with the parents, doing the extra things that we want to do versus the second jobs that so many of us have picked up to make ends meet. The times in the summer that used to be about recharging your batteries and learning and growing and preparing for the coming year have been taken up by other jobs and other work that we've had to do. And we recognize that this is something that's happening nationwide, that people have had to tighten their belts in tougher economic times. However, we do ask that you keep in mind that the more that we have to focus outside of our classroom on these second jobs, the less that we can do in our classroom. I want to spend my evenings calling parents and preparing for the next day and trying to do everything I can for every student that I have. I've tried to make that my priority with, along with my family, of course. But I also have to look out for the well-being of my family, and, and I have picked up second work. I do do private tutoring. I do other things. And we need you to support us and to support the recommendations so that those second things don't become priorities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to have public commentary from each of the organizations that Joel Block mentioned. For those of you who are rookies, this is the official kickoff of the budget season, is when Peak, Seek, and EAK come to talk to us about their, their priorities. And so we're in for the next 16 weeks or so of budget fun, but we like to hear from our staff first and foremost. So can we have the SEEK representative, please, come forward first, Mary Beth?
Hello and greetings from Seek. I am Mary Beth Connolly. I am the chair of Seek this year. And, is it all right if I close? Sebby, can I close this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And first, I want to thank Joan Wadiska for her service on the board and her support of the support staff and all staff, and wish you well in your new position. Seek recommends the school board the following salary improvements for all employees. We remain committed to ensuring that compensation, both salary and benefits, continue to increase for all employees. A step increase is important to all employees as a way to increase salaries, acknowledge the valuable contributions of staff members, and advance careers. Seek requests both a step and a COLA increase for all employees. There are 17 support employees who are at the top of the salary scale and thus would receive no salary increase through just a step increase. These employees will benefit from a COLA or, and, the addition of steps at the end of their lanes. There are approximately 90 support staff on the city retirement plan who experienced a take-home pay cut in fiscal year 12 because of the change to the city retirement plan contribution. The step increase this current year brought many of those support employees back to the same level that they had been receiving in fiscal year 2011. Because of this, any increase in the coming fiscal year will be the first increase to take-home pay that these employees have received since July of 2009. Each individual employee contributes to the success of each student in our nationally-recognized school system. Support employees are working harder than ever to sustain the support needed to maintain this level of excellence. Seek is asking the superintendent and the board to recognize these contributions by providing substantial and ongoing salary improvements for all employees. The second part of the Seek recommendation is maintaining the current level of benefits for all employees, including retirees, and bringing back several items that have been removed from the budget in the past few years. We want to remind the board of the 1% to 3% match to the 403B retirement plan that was taken out in fiscal year 2011, and we request- And we request that this employee benefit is returned to the budget. It's particularly important, given the continuing erosion of retirement benefits in the V R S and city retirement plans. Seek requests that the tuition reimbursement program, which was also removed in fiscal year 2011, be reinstated. And the last part of our request is to continue adequate staffing to meet the demands of continued student enrollment growth and the transition of 5th grade to T J and 8th grade to Mary Ellen Henderson. We request that you continue to provide the appropriate number of support and professional staff to manage the grade-level transitions and the increased student population at T J. One example, and there are many, is the T J cafeteria is going to be handling additional students and adding another lunch period, and it may require additional employee hours or staff hours. And we ask that you look at that and also other situations that will require more staff. So, thank you for your work on the budget in the coming 16 weeks and for giving us the opportunity to have you put into this process.
Thanks very much. All right.
Hello, school board. Dr. Jones. Jones, I'm very sad to see you go. It's fun times hearing you fight it out on Saturday mornings, so. Okay. The professional employee advisory committee would like to present the following recommendations regarding salaries and benefits for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. Peak recommends a salary improvement for all of our professional employees, including but not limited to a full step on the salary scale and a COLA representative of the increase in the consumer price index. For the last several years, Peak has worked with the schools, school board and the city council to maintain a strong school system while ensuring the fiscal health of both the schools and the city. Despite these collaborative efforts, the financial health of the school professional employees has not recovered from the difficulties beginning in 2009. While we're grateful for the increases we have been afforded the last two years, the professional staff is still struggling to make ends meet. The cost of living has increased dramatically over the past few years, but the professional staff has not seen any cost of living adjustments since 2008. Many of our employees work second or even third jobs to support themselves and their families. Peak acknowledges that V R S contributions change, changes required by the state and thanks the board for adopting a slow implementation process of those increases. Yet, we wish to remind the board that an equivalent percentage increase in our individuals' salary does not result in an equivalent paycheck. Additionally, if no increases, given the individuals' paycheck will actually decrease. Peak also wants to thank the superintendent and school board for the continued efforts to be competitive with the surrounding districts, most recently with the mid-range salary adjustments this year. Peak encourages them to further this practice and help the Falls Church City Schools to recruit and retain the best qualified teachers. Secondly, Peak recommends that when facing difficult budget decisions, the school board and superintendent continue to look for alternative sources of revenue and continue to ensure enough personnel to continue, that's interest, continue to ensure enough personnel to continue our excellent educational program. Over the past few years, the school board has done a tremendous job in finding new resources, new sources of revenue, including things like pay-for-play sports, increased parking fees and the potential partnerships with cellular providers. Peak thanks the board and superintendent for their hard work on these endeavors and urges them to continue to look for these creative revenue sources. Additionally, our student enrollment continues to increase at a faster pace than any time in our history. Peak recognizes the board's work to limit the number of students in each class and reduce the sizes of larger classes once the school year has begun. Peak encourages and supports the superintendent and school board to provide F T Es needed to support this work to reduce class size. And thirdly, Peak recommends that normal customary benefits and their customary increases occur as in the past. Examples are not include, but are not limited to tuition waivers, health insurance, long-term disability, employee assistance, compensation for sick leave and funding for the mentor program. Additionally, Peak would like to remind the board of the removal of the 1% to 3% match that was removed for our 403B plan in the budget cycle three years ago. We urge the reinstatement of this match in accordance with the promises put forth by the school board in the 2011 budget season. Also, the same budget cycle mentioned above, remove the tuition reimbursement for other universities besides those at the graduate center. Opportunity for tuition support at other university encourages continued education and provides our system with highly qualified staff. Peak recommends the tuition reimbursements be reinstated. Peak is committed to ensure that the professional staff budget recommendations are heard and understood. We will continue to be part of the process and I'm sure you'll see us frequently. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk to you. And as always, we do support the recommendations made by SEEK previously and the ones that will be made by EAK momentarily. Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Now, moving on to EAK.
Good evening, everyone. And I just want to take a moment to say best wishes to Joan. I enjoyed serving with you on the special ed advisory committee and you'll be missed. Best luck. First, I want to thank you for your upcoming hard work on the budget. That's soon to be consuming your time and your energy and your thoughts. And also, thank our colleagues on SEEK and Peak for their work. We support their requests and I think you see a lot of consistency in all of our requests. In terms of what EAK has focused on, we've taken into consideration the school board's goal of retaining and recruiting the most highly qualified staff. And also, looking at the students and the needs that we have in our system to be sure that we have people prepared to meet the needs of a changing population and are having opportunities to continue to grow professionally in order to meet the needs of our students. So, our three recommendations were chosen based from that framework. And they include the salary improvements, including the step and the COLA, again, so that we can recruit and retain the best staff. We know that this year, we've had to recruit more staff during the school year than we typically have to, and we know we're going to be adding staff next year, so we think that that's really important. We also included the 1% to 3% match for the 403B, which was consistent with our colleagues. And then, the tuition reimbursement. Again, looking at how can we continue to support the professional growth of our staff to be prepared in critical field areas that we may find needs in terms of our student population and to be sure that our staff is able and prepared in light of the new evaluation system and looking at the focus on student academic progress and helping our staff have the tools they need to be successful. So, we appreciate all of the work that the other committees have in putting their proposal forward and thank you for your time in listening to EAK.
Thank you. For those folks in the audience who are going to go to bed shortly, let me remind you that the superintendent will be presenting her budget to this body in this room on the 22nd of January.
And it may actually end up having to be at central office. We have huge conflicts that night.
Oh, it may have to be in central office. We may have a conflict that night, but it'll be on the 22nd of January. We're going to discuss and adopt a budget calendar later, but for those people who can't stay up that late, I just wanted to make that comment because I'm one of those usually. All right. Moving right along to the consent agenda, Mr. Campbell.
Yes. Number of items. The first, personnel. That the board approve the following staff appointment for the 2012-2013 school year. Todd Horacecheck, special education paraprofessional, system-wide. Resignations. That the school board accept the following staff resignations. Travis Baratus, special education paraprofessional, Thomas Jefferson, effective December 21st, 2012. Dr. Darren Cowell, special education teacher, George Mason, effective January the 10th, 2013. And Kofi Nyanar, custodian, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective January the 12th, 2013. Approval of childcare leave. The school board approve childcare leave for an employee, Thomas Jefferson, effective until June 30th, 2013. Policy 5.12, citizens advisory committees. That the school board waive first reading and approve second reading and adoption of policy 5.12, citizen advisory committee. And then, advisory committee appointments. That the school board approve the following advisory committee appointments. Marcela Estrada, E S O L for a term ending June 30th, 2014. Lawrence Webb, gifted and talented advisory committee for a term ending June 30th, 2015. And George Mason students, Wuri Cho and Giovanna Burdisso, E S O L advisory committee for terms ending June 30th, 2014. And under student matters, that the school board waive, approve the waiver of tuition for a family with a student currently in grade one and an incoming kindergartner for the fall of 2013 contingent upon the construction renovation contract effective from mid-March 2013 until November 2013.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sharp, for that second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed or abstaining? No. Thank you very much. We've approved the consent agenda for this evening. Moving along to business action information items. Item 8.01, safety and security. Dr. Jones?
And I'll ask Mr. Petya to come forward. We have just a few slides prepared tonight and one thing I would like for Sevi to do for us is just to review just a few items that we have focused on because I think it's really important. You know, as you know, I did email the community and as part of that reassurance and let them know some of the safety and security features that we do have in place because unless you're a parent who really does drop a student off and you're coming to our schools frequently, you may not know. You don't know that we have buzzer systems and that we do have a lot of safety and security features. So, we're going to start with just one or two slides. I know Sevi has just the projects that we already had in place and have been working on.
Yeah. The first one is just the, back in September when we did the safety and security update, this is basically that information. Just kind of tells you what we have done. At George Mason, we did install a new card reader at the high C lab. We've been replacing and upgrading some cameras throughout the system. Mary Ellen Henderson, one thing that I've had on there that we haven't done yet and we're still waiting for, is the new video intercom at that building. We had to repair their intercom system. It was out for a short little while, but we got that back up and running. The new metro, or the new exit from the, or it goes on to the metro access road, which is being planned through the city of Falls Church pedestrian plan. The city is working on that with V dot and Metro. They're still working, getting some of the finalizations on that. We're hoping for this summer to have that installed. And Thomas Jefferson, the only thing we've done over there so far is the, we added a child safety officer that is at the front desk and helps playground and other duties as the principal sees fit. We haven't done any facility upgrades because a lot of that's going to be addressed with the renovation, the construction that's going on right now. Mary, I mean, Mount Daniel, we are going to be adding some new cameras, exterior cameras this summer. Those will, it's just easier, it's easier to do them in the summer when there's no kids involved. We have to bring heavy lifts and everything out there. We are replacing the pedestrian gate that goes on to the playground. The current one is, you know, any, you could, it doesn't secure and there's no way for, to sometimes keep the children inside with that. We can't physically lock it. We're not allowed, obviously, by the law. So, we're going to take out about a 10-foot section and it'll be a larger, taller section with an egress from the outside that can be locked from the outside, but you can always get out. That's on order right now. Or the P O has been submitted. We're just waiting for everything to get finalized and sent out to the contractor. And then, the division-wide, it's just we've been working with I T to update our camera system, merging onto a new, a new system that we're working on. The proposed things, and we talked about this during our work session, is the fencing gates around the entire Mary Ellen and George Mason campus. So, before I go to move on from that topic, I'll show you what we were talking about already. I found my map. See if I can zoom in a little bit. A little better. Hold on. And maybe the other one's a little better. Okay. Can everybody sort of see this? Oh. Oh, there we go. That's much better.
He knows his way around, doesn't he?
Maybe it's better to look over on this one. This one looks a little bit.
It's because your meetings are so long, you have to take maps.
Laser on it. So, what we were talking about earlier, it looks like, if you can see my line where I put the basic idea of the fence. So, it's going to tie in over here where we have the existing metro access road fence that we already have. It goes around the full perimeter of the athletic facilities and the bus lot and everything. It'll tie in going in here. We'll replace the gate that we have. The gate right now is just for car access. It doesn't prevent any pedestrian access. We'll replace that with a slider gate and I'll show you some pictures of what I'm talking about earlier or later. We'll also replace, we don't have any gates down here right in front of Mason. Actually, I'm sorry, there's not one right there. It's right here. This entrance. So, we'll also, we'll add a gate there. We'll go all the way down to the corner. And what Dr. Jones mentioned earlier is that one option, instead of closing off that lower lot, we would move the fence up and that lot would stay open. That would, I'm thinking that would help with the traffic flow in the mornings and afternoons. We wouldn't have to worry about opening up gates for the students. But there would be a gate like, similar to our pedestrian gate, similar to what we're putting in Mount Daniel. You can't get in, but students could always get out. And there's, the entrance, we're thinking whether it be, we don't know yet, but, you know, maybe whether it'd be a guard booth or something around it here would be pushed up further because we've got to allow for the grad center to be able to get into their delivery entrances on the site and there's no way to remove that. And then, the gate would just continue on all the way down to our existing fences start. And again, right here, where the, where the V R staff or whomever that crosses from the metro grad center, there'd be another pedestrian gate there that would, you know, whether it be a card reader or whatever we put on it, we're not sure yet. But that's the basic idea. It can, this obviously can change when we actually move forward with whatever we end up doing.
And if I just may, just in case somebody wasn't listening during our work session, that securing M E H and G M campus, we do think is a critical, a critical need for us. And it was something that we were looking at last year and we really had thought, okay, we'll wait until we build the brand-new high school. But, you know, given the last couple of weeks and just, and we're always focused on security, but it's one of our most challenging areas. And so, to be able to close that campus where we can cut off the pedestrian traffic would definitely make that campus so much safer.
And these are the types of fences that we're proposing. I mean, it's just, you know, it's a metal-style fence. It's not wrought iron, but obviously that's that style. And the gate would be some sort of sliding gate like that. Something that's heavy-duty that's going to last and not cause us continued problems. A chain link, it's very flimsy and it doesn't take much to knock them out of alignment. And our fence contractors seem to think these would be, these would be something that would last us for the long term. So, going back, the next thing that obviously has come up with some discussions between Tony and I have been the, Dr. Jones and I, sorry, the private security at all the schools. And what do we want to, you know, we recently met with a private security company to discuss our options. And obviously, there are two options. Do you do unarmed security or do you arm? I know this discussion in Richmond and other states, but I'm kind of going to defer to Dr. Jones for that one.
We started out the discussion because, you know, it's happening nationwide right now. Do you want teachers to be carrying guns in schools, principals, superintendents? And I can tell you overwhelmingly that I have not heard one staff member that is an advocate for that. And we do support VAS, V S B A. Everybody has come out with a statement to say, it's not that we just want to look at other options. We don't feel like that's the best option to be putting that responsibility on teachers to be armed or administrators. But, and given that, the armed versus unarmed is something that we wanted to start researching because we really didn't know a lot about that other than the very first place we started, probably the second day after Sandy Hook. And I just also want to say, we do offer our condolences. This is the first meeting that we've had since Sandy Hook. And as you know, I mean, that's, that was, I think, very difficult for our staff to deal with and what a tremendous job they did welcoming our children back and just getting them right back into feeling safe and secure that very first day. So, I want to commend them on that. But, we met with, when we met with Securitas, it was really to look at the difference between armed and unarmed. But we started with our resource officer and meeting with local city police because, you know, some of our families may be aware and some may not be. We do have a resource officer at the high school who is armed. And he is Falls Church City Police Officer that works, you know, with the school division. So, we started with the city just to say if we wanted, and I talked to Mr. Shields about it, you know, the city manager, then we also met with Mary Gavin, who is the new police, right? And she came out, met with Sevi and I both. And the biggest challenge with the resource officer, if we could choose anything that would make us feel really safe and secure, that's the way we would love to go. The issue is, we're a city of 2.2 square miles. We're very small. At any given time, Mary said that they have three patrol officers out in the field. I mean, that's, so, for us to request three more would be a very big request of the city. But the biggest challenge that we actually would have, because it's not just a matter of hiring, it's the training. And from their perspective, it takes two years to get an officer ready. They have to go to the academy. It's, Falls Church doesn't have the capacity just to go and hire somebody who's ready to, not necessarily place in the school, because somebody who's in the field now would most likely take the school position. It's getting the new officer ready for the streets of Falls Church. of Falls Church. And so, that's a two-year process. Not that we couldn't do it, but it definitely is long-term. And then, again, you're trying to get a resource officer. So, that was where we started first. Then, we started looking at what are the actual security options. And I think it's important to know what we have, because you may not be aware. At our high school, we do have two security staff, and Sevi, you might talk about their, their certificate training. We do have two security staff, as well as a resource officer at George Mason. And some people may just see them and think they're custodial staff, because they're everywhere. But, they're constantly roaming the building, looking for open doors, monitoring cameras, making sure that we know who's in the building. But, we have three at George Mason. Did you want to comment on what certification they have?
Sure. And the middle school is the same. They have the same certifications.
Right.
But, they all go through the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services School Safety, I can't remember the title, School Safety Office, but it's through DCGS. They all had to go through that training and get updated every single year. And it's, it's the same training that a lot of private security uses as well. It's, it's all sort of right through the state.
And then, at MEH, we have one security person who, and we, and we really started last year being very vigilant. We expect them to be at the front entrance. And, and we definitely stop and go in and have a chat if there's not somebody there. I mean, we see it, and we, and we've been like that. We've been very vigilant before this happened to make sure that, because it's difficult when you have security personnel that are hired as part of your staff, because it's so tempting when somebody's not there for lunch duty, or somebody's not there for cafeteria duty, to go just pull them for a couple of hours from that front desk. So, we've really tried to make sure that we have people where they're supposed to be. At TJ, we added the safety officer. He's not a trained person, and that really was more construction-oriented, making sure kids are safe from the building. We don't have children, you know, around the construction equipment at recess. So, I can't, he, he is still at the front of the building when he's not working on the playground safety issues. But, we don't have the same level of security at our elementary. Mount Daniel doesn't have a security personnel. So, that's where we are right now. So, as we started examining, the unarmed or armed, and we started working with Securitas, which was a firm, and we called around several, but with Securitas, we were actually surprised as we started meeting with them. They're starting to get requests to have armed security, but the Securitas branch, after they reviewed, they actually took it to their top level, will not do it, because they feel it's too big of a liability, and it's a huge security firm. And Sevi, you might talk about Securitas and where they are, but the places where they are right now, they're unarmed, even though they're getting these requests. And then, we are going to talk about the armed as well. We did get a second viewpoint on that. But, if you'll talk about Securitas and some of the places where they are right now and how they operate and...
Yeah, Securitas, I mean, they do provide an armed section, but not in any schools.
Not for us.
They do provide, they are in unarmed capacity in Alexandria City public schools. Not fully. Alexandria City does have school security, just like we do. They, they're in countless office buildings around, around DC. So, most of you have probably seen them somewhere in some meeting or your own office building. They, they definitely were reluctant with that. I think there's, there's the huge liability there. But, if the armed part that they gave us, as far as a reference, the only one that they gave us was the Alexandria City Police Department, which is a completely different scenario than, than putting them in a school. But, all their other references, George Mason University, all these, they're all unarmed officers, and they work in, just in addition to the police, police departments. And they're, they're an international company. They're very large in this region, and they operate locally. So, we're not dealing with somebody in Chicago or New York. We're dealing with someone right here in DC or right here in the Virginia area. So, they're specialized our needs and what we would want if, if we decide to go that route.
And then, you know, just in, in doing part of that research and looking at the armed, we also, it's the same group, and it's a different branch, where Pinkerton is, it's basically double the cost, you know, to have armed because of the liability. But, we wanted to be sure we were bringing informed, you know, information to you. So, and going armed, they can do it, but I will tell you, I mean, they have walked our campuses, and really, the, they, the biggest challenge they saw was exactly what we're talking about tonight, which was MEH and GM and getting it closed. And, you know, and I'll be very honest in talking, and there's experts in the field. And when we asked them, because I, you know, I said to them, you know, what could Sandy Hook have done differently, you know, given that situation, because they did. And we really reinforced this to our staff. They did everything right as a staff. You know, they locked it down immediately. They had a buzzer system. They, they did everything that we are trained to do. And in talking with them, you know, from their perspective and all of the research that you have with safety and security, that it would take more than one armed person to actually secure a building. So, if you're really looking at a model like they have in some of the federal buildings, if you're looking at a model like they have, and the Holocaust Museum was one that was given as an example. And while this is a really scary topic, I know, to talk about, but the reality is that having one armed shooter, that if it is somebody who's mentally unstable, or they're planning something, you know, whether it's a school or anywhere, the first thing they plan to do is take out the armed person right through the glass. And so, then, you're in the same situation. And it's usually the second or the third responder as the team response that actually is able to secure. And their advice to us was, they didn't feel that, and again, they deal with both, and they make more money if we go with armed. But, being a school, they felt like the, well, they, they use the, I can't remember the phrase they use, but just the, just how difficult it is to have somebody that's armed in a school around children and making that judgment call, that that was more unsafe, they felt, than actually going unarmed. So, we're bringing the information to you to ask questions of us, to let us know, you know, what more you want us to do. I can tell you that we would like to see, for sure, whether it's unarmed or armed, that's a big discussion. I'm sure we'll have community and PTA and people that will want to weigh in. We definitely would like to see unarmed security at each one of our schools, in addition to what we have now. And we do feel like that that's something that we need. And part of that is our location and where we are. And they did say that it is, from their perspective, and again, looking at, these are experts in their field, that it is a huge deterrent, just having that person there who's, you know, in a very, a uniform. It's, they may choose to, you know, go on down the street somewhere else, which is a scary thought as well. But, they did say that it definitely is a deterrent. So, Sevi, did you want to add to that?
I think that's pretty much.
That pretty got it.
Pretty much everything, yeah, yeah. All right. So, moving on from that, as I mentioned in the other one, the video intercom at Mary Ellen's, we're still awaiting the funding for it, but that's still something I do have on the list. Dr. Jones and I have discussed having a division-wide emergency response drill at some point. We're not sure when. Most of our drills are pretty, you know, rigorously scheduled around whatever the school day may happen to have. And so, we've kind of feel, in response to Sandy Hook, we, we need to have something that's kind of not, not the norm, you know, pull it, we test it when there's recess or during the cafeteria, or whatever it may be. It's not, the principals may, and the teachers may not, not the best time for them, but it definitely will, will test our response and see what we can do. And then, the additional stuff is just additional emergency response training for the staff, whether it be review, keep constantly reviewing our plans and what we can do to, to make it better. And that is all I have.
And I know one of the questions we had was about our response. You know, what do you do if something's happening? And, and, you know, we're very fortunate that we are in a small city with 2.2 square miles, because the response would be so quick. And, you know, we tell staff, we do have our walkie-talkies. They were all upgraded last year, so that, because we have experience in this city where we've lost power and lost cell phones, even during the earthquake, none of our cell phones would work. And I think I had been here not very long, and some of the walkie-talkies wouldn't work. So, we got walkie-talkies very quickly. They've all been upgraded. So, we have emergency channel. We do have that. But, truthfully, we said call 911. I mean, that's the fastest response we would have in this city, is calling 911 and getting our officers to respond. So, that is our first response. So, that's an update on what we're working on right now with all of the quotes and everything that we're looking at. And then, it's, you know, deciding how we want to go forward. But, you will see in the budget, we definitely will have an unarmed request for security. We feel like that that's an essential request for us. And if we decide to go in another direction, obviously, that's a big community discussion.
Sure, sure. All right. Are there any questions? I'll start down this end with you. Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes, I have quite a, that I'd like to discuss on this issue. So, a few things. One, I would like for us to consider approaching the National Association of School Resource Officers. I know that Virginia has a great program, whether it's the SROs or the SSOs, but Nazro is doing a lot in this field. I think that I'm inclined to, for us to explore a little more the idea of armed school resource officers at all of our schools. There's going to be a bill in the General Assembly. Delegate Mark Cole of Spotsylvania is going to be, has already forwarded a bill requiring a school resource officer in every school. And I'll, and I'll tell you why I support it and why I think we need to look into it. The, the issue with active shooters, a lot has changed in how it's dealt with now. And I do believe, I mean, I, I honor the advice that we were getting from Pinkerton's and Securitas, but I think you would get other advice from other folks in this regard. And while it may take a while for us to get folks trained up in that regard, I think we should explore making the investment as a city and as a school system. I don't like the idea of, you know, having armed guards at our schools, but I do like the idea of being able to respond. The good news is that school resource officers are specifically trained for school environments. I mean, that's the whole reason they exist. And the training is, is very different for, you know, armed law enforcement that work in school settings. And that's why it takes so long. And that's why I don't think we need to waste a whole lot of time thinking about whether or not we're going to do it. So, you know, my approach here would be to immediately, I don't, we don't need to wait for this budget cycle. If we can ask for the funds tonight, I would support doing it, to immediately put unarmed security in all of our facilities, to the extent that you feel is necessary. I'm fine with two at each school to augment where we don't have any, and maybe augment a little more at the other places. I would be willing to say, let's do that tonight. And then, to explore the thoughts of Nazro and maybe even Virginia, the CJS folks on school resource officers. I recognize that the police department may not have the ability. I don't think we need to ask them to. I think we need to include it in our budget, that we budget for, we ask for the funding to actually hire school resource officers, not to have them loaned to us. And I'm not so sure that it has to go through the police department. I don't know if we can check with the sheriff's department or not, but I think that they actually have the ability to put school resource officers through as well. Whatever we can do to look into it, we need to do. As far as response training, I would also suggest that we immediately seek active shooter training for our staff. It's an entirely different thing than sort of like, you know, drill training. Active shooter training is now readily available. I've been through it. It's really pretty impressive. The training just takes an hour or two. And, and, you know, most of my fellow board members know my background from federal law enforcement and military. It's a, it was, I learned a lot. It's a lot different approach. And I think it's an investment worth a couple of hours for our staff to go through. So, I would suggest that we look into that. I know there are plenty of folks out there that do active shooter response training. So, these are the things, I know, I've, I've talked about this with parents. I've talked about it with some staff recently. People have widely different opinions. I'm not in favor, I'm not happy about the idea of this, but I really think that right now, it's the responsible thing for us to think about doing. And I would encourage my board to consider looking into it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments on this end of the table?
Just to pull back, just to kind of put this in context again, and Mr. Rasmussen, I certainly appreciate and share your sentiment. Safety and security is job one in any public school, and it is something we take absolutely, very, very seriously. The school district has a commitment to be proactive about it. We do an annual assessment of our facilities. We do annual surveys with our staff to find out how can we improve. And I just kind of want to frame our conversation first by saying that this is something that we, we do take seriously, and that is the foundation for learning, is safety and security in, in our classrooms. So, I also want to compliment Dr. Jones and her staff in how you handled communication to parents in light of Sandy Hook and Newton, and you've really done an exceptional job of being a crisp, clean, timely communicator to parents, and the way that our staff handled it was exceptional. And it was developmentally appropriate, and it was geared differently at the different buildings. And I just, these are terrible and tragic circumstances when they occur. The flip side is, these are things that school districts do plan for, and we do plan for them, and we are well-prepared. So, I would just also remind the board, as well as the public, that the question of funding for a school resource officer is something that has come under attack in prior budget debates, and it is something the school board has had to fight very hard to keep. And I'm hoping in light of recent activity that there is greater awareness about the critical importance to support the school board's budget requests and on school safety needs, and that those are items, just as Mr. Rasmussen has noted, that should not be delayed, that should be funded immediately if deficiencies are found, and they should be taken care of, because you don't get a chance to do a redo. So, whatever the board decides to do on this item, again, I have full faith it'll be the right course of action. But, I appreciate Mr. Padilla, all the work that you've done over the years to, to keep our facilities safe and secure and in good condition. And you really do a marvelous job, and I want to appreciate you and your leadership and your team. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Swediska. Ms. Hyland?
Just a question. If, if this were something that we were to potentially act on now, rather than waiting until the budget cycle, what is the implication, the monetary implication? Do we have any idea?
We know for Securitas, and Securitas is about $135,000, and you double that if you go with armed. And a resource officer, it's much like funding a teacher. I mean, that's basically what you look at. And we budget it about $85,000.
Okay.
Per, per, per position.
Right, right.
Per position.
Did you have something you wanted to add to that?
What?
Did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I just wanted to add something that we didn't really talk about. The difference in a school resource officer and, and having these, these armed security through Securitas or whomever maybe we decide to go with, is that when you pay for the officer, we don't necessarily get a backup. So, if you've got one or two that are out, you know, if Officer Rao is out, we don't, we have no backup, and then, we can call, we can call dispatch, and that's what we have to do. But, with some company like Securitas, there's always three or four or five in, behind them that are, that are trained on our sites, that are always there, no matter what. That we're paying for a position, not necessarily that particular person. So, that's just something else to consider when we're looking at an SRO type of thing.
Good point. Thanks so much.
Madam Chief, just, yes. Can I just get this into the table first? Thank you. Mr. Castillo, do you have questions or comments?
What are other jurisdictions doing? Arlington, Alexandria?
In this, in this region, there's, there's very little private security in schools. Now, now that we're getting to this, after Sandy Hook, that's, that's definitely going to change. Securitas has been reached by many of our neighboring jurisdictions. There's only a few of us, or a few jurisdictions around here that really have a full-fledged security system, I mean, security service, and that's Fairfax. They have a 24-hour, you know, security service that patrols, monitors a central, central command center. But, they also have, you know, almost 200,000 students, and they have the resources to do it. And they're still limited. They don't have school resource officers in every school. They don't have, you know, a guard at every single door. They're, they're lacking too. So, I think it's going to come, but I don't think there's, there's not any school systems around here that are, that are, that are going this route yet.
And I will tell you, Securitas was, I think, impressed with where we were.
Yeah.
That we actually had three, a resource officer and two security at our high school. We are one of the few high schools with just over 900 students where you would find that.
Anything else?
And in, in terms of best practices, what, what are considered best practices for school security?
Well, I think number one is just securing your, securing your building, not having doors left open and visitors signing in and, and all this. And when you, when you look at the elementary and the middle school, you have far fewer entrances. You go to the high school, and there's 30-some-odd, you know, doors that, and they get left open, propped open, whether it be the students wanting to go to the field, or their car, or whatever else. And the building's aging too, and that's, that's, that's always, that's always a difficult thing for us, just keeping the doors and everything and, and working. But, I think the best practice is just keeping the staff and students, everyone aware, that you see some, you see something, say something, just like you see on the metro. See somebody walking in the building, doesn't have a visitor badge. If you're a student, call, call someone, tell someone, so we can get them stopped and figure out what's going on.
And so, to follow up, are private security considered best practices, or is, are people reevaluating that?
I, I think that's a, that's a new road we're, we're going down, and so, I don't, it may be a best practice... And so I don't, it may be a best practice three years from now. But I think we're definitely the new kid on the block looking at this right now.
School resource officers really, I mean, it dates back to even Columbine is, I think if you ask school superintendents, we would love one in every building. It's always been finance-driven. So best practice, I think everybody would agree that you would want one in your schools. But getting it funded has always been the challenge everywhere across the country. And after Columbine, and the interesting thing is here, I think all of us have been to close proximity where we've had either very close to 9/11. For me, you know, Oklahoma City bombing, they're just, so you're heightened. I think our heightened awareness is probably that some of the people in this division, it's better than it would be, say, in another part of the country. But that's always, it's been some funding. I mean, without a doubt, having a school resource officer that knows your children. So not only if it's a security issue, but when kids are coming in the building, they know if that's not your student. Because, I mean, we've stopped a person on our campus who looked like he was 18, but he wasn't our student. But it's funding. It's always been the funding.
Yeah, I definitely think we need more information at this point. You know, I'll tell you, my concern is that, you know, for example, in the wake of 9/11, there was a lot of security and this concept of security theater came up. And, you know, fundamentally, the thing that's made our air transportation system safer is you have reinforced cockpit doors and nobody gets into the flight deck. That's been very effective. Critics have said there are a lot of other things, like the lines we stand in at the TSA, that really don't add incremental value. And so I think it's very important that we be extremely critical and scrutinize what the measures are, what work well. I mean, I think securing the perimeters of the schools is absolutely important. But, you know, fundamentally, what sickens me is to think of, do we pay for a teacher or do we pay for a security guard? And I would hope that we don't have to make those kinds of decisions.
Mr. Sharp, do you have questions or comments?
I have a lot, and probably not all are pertinent now. I do want to thank the staff for the very good responses, Jones said, to the recent incident. And even on our city side, I know very, very shortly after the incident occurred in Connecticut, I was seeing email from the vice mayor asking us, you know, are there things that we should be looking out for because this incident has occurred? And I thought that was, you know, absolutely extraordinary and is a reflection of how this kind of concern for school safety pervades our community. It's not just those among the school board or school staff or others. And I have some, I guess I'll say additional concerns. One that I wonder about is whether there have been studies by, maybe not the security companies themselves, but perhaps by insurers, to say that as a matter of risk management, you may have reason to want to limit the number of armed people in a particular facility. I think if you consider, you know, how many times have you gone into a bank recently and seen an armed guard? I think probably you haven't seen one. And yet, you know, you would think that was a typical place that you would find one. I think there's probably a good reason why that isn't occurring. It probably has to do with the risk management, with the insurance, that has some factual basis for why that's occurring. And so I'd ask if we could find out if that kind of information is available. I've also heard that when you have guards that are armed, whether they're the school resource officer or some other source, that if they're deployed to a school, that there may be some disrespect for that particular category of employee as a kiddie cop. Some diminutive term that suggests that that person isn't quite up to speed with maybe some of the other officers. And I'd want to, if we have some of these measures, I'd like to see, you know, what can we do to counter any adverse consequences that may be out there? What are some of the unintended things that we should think about? And one that's maybe further on my mind is this putting a fence around the facility, whether it's the high school or other schools. I'm concerned about our community's participation in the schools, particularly parents' participation. And if we have increased security, whether it's fences or otherwise, how do we continue to sustain a welcoming atmosphere for legitimate adult presence by our community in the schools? So I think there is a very strong safety reason to try to encourage other members of the community, and again, I'll say legitimate members of the community, who have a reason to be at the schools, that if we have a lot of them, that that's a deterrent to people who have bad reasons to be at the schools. That there'd be more chance that they're caught and dealt with appropriately. So those are some of the kinds of pieces of information that I'd like to receive as we consider these proposals. I think it's important that we communicate to our community the things that we have done, the reasons why we are very safe in our environment, why schools in general are very safe environments, and also the proposals that we're considering to enhance that security going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
I'm just going to respond to one thing that Greg said about, you know, training for an active shooter situation. I mean, frankly, you know, you were in the Army, you were in the ATF. I work for a group that helped other countries do elections. So I have absolutely no idea what this involves. So frankly, if that sounds like a good idea, I think we should see if we can get it for anyone on the board who would be interested to find out what we'd be talking about. Because I know I couldn't even begin to talk or vote intelligently on something like that, which actually sounds good, because I don't know what it would involve or whether it would be, you know, something where people would come out more confident or simply more scared. So, I mean, I'd be willing to take, you know, hour, two-hour, half-day, whatever it would take. But, you know, if we're going to go down this road, and we've got to go down this road to a certain degree, you know, I'd like to start with us getting some more socialization as to what it actually involves, since, you know, thank goodness, we haven't been personally involved.
I just wanted to respond to that. I will say that the Falls River Police actually has a program that Dr. Jones and I discussed with Chief Gavin. And it's basically, that's basically what it is. It's a response to an active shooter. But she says it's not really deemed, this particular program is not deemed for a school. She doesn't really think it's appropriate for the schools to teach. For an office building, for our central office staff, it's a different environment. So we could probably talk about that for, you know, us. And I don't know if there's a different program that they're working on, maybe for the schools later on. But that's where we are right now.
All right. For my part, I would simply want to thank Dr. Jones and Sebby and the rest of the staff, both for your response a few weeks ago to that heartbreaking situation. And also for being so proactive in pulling together first-line information for us tonight. I think your update has been comprehensive and very helpful. I think the board has given you some indication of what we're thinking, what our opinions are, where we might want to head. And I guess what I would do is tell you to proceed with all deliberate haste to help us sort this out. I think there is a sense of urgency to make sure that we do the right thing if there are things to be done. But at the same time, we want to make sure that our decisions are sound and that we have the right kinds of information. So I would ask the two of you to put your heads together, come back to us with answers to our questions, the kind of information we need, and a plan based on that gathering of knowledge for how we move forward. I agree with Mr. Rasmick that we don't necessarily need to wait for the new budget year if there are things that we think are important to do now. And I would agree with him that if we're going to talk about guns in the schools, that's a longer community conversation. Certainly for me, that's a long community conversation. So I think if you guys have what you need, if you will just put your heads together and to give us a timeframe when you're going to come back to us, that would be helpful. Anything else? All right. Thanks so much.
Actually, I do.
Just hold tight. Yes, Mr. Sharp?
As part of our legislative activity, I think we're going to be asked to consider this question. And there are other questions that are sort of hanging out there from our previous consideration of legislative matters. And so I hope that we could schedule something very soon because the legislative session is beginning later this week. And it's only going to last for 30 days. And I think it's important that we develop a position to be able to communicate. And I will just suggest that one thing that we may be asking the VSBA, NSBA maybe, to do is to request some of these joint communications with the resource officers, with VAS. But I'd also say with the NRA. They have put forward their own study there, you know, that they have a very firm position about what they think is appropriate. You know, I think from our standpoint, or at least from mine, I'd like to put the question out there, is there a way that we can achieve the reduction of the number of arms that are available in our community? And I'd like to put that question to them. I think they have some positions where their position as to why they want armed people in schools is that criminals can get guns. There are lots of people who can get guns. And I think the underlying assumption there is that guns are available. And there are too many of them. And I think they need to own up to that and help us to figure out how do we reduce their availability. That's it.
All right. Thanks for that, Karen, because I had meant in my wrap-up to mention that this is a topic that we'll be coming back around to, at least for the next 30 days, probably 60, 90, 120 and longer. We know that in Richmond, there'll be a number of bills that are introduced that have to do with all varieties and flavors of schools and guns and safety based on this. We know that our governor has appointed a task force on this topic, which will be moving with its own deliberate haste to discuss what the governor thinks might be done. We know that the governor has indicated he'd like to have a conversation about arming staff in schools. We know that VSBA and the Association of Superintendents, there's going to be a lot of conversation about this. And so one thing I'd like for this board and community to do is, where possible, is try to kind of separate the things that we can do as a community now based on an evaluation of our current situation and get done versus our appropriate, responsible participation in conversations in Richmond and Washington and elsewhere, even among the NRA, about longer-term solutions, even if longer-term only means six months from now. But you'll be hearing a lot about this as we monitor what goes on in Richmond, as we monitor what goes on at the federal level. Mr. Rasmick, did you have one more comment?
Yeah, only because of that short timeframe. I mean, you know, I think that, I don't know if, is Lila, Lila, excuse me? Lila. I don't know if we should approach her on this. I mean, as far as, I know that there are a lot of bills. And one of the things that I'm most interested, I don't want to miss an opportunity here is because they come with funding. And that has been the issue. So I think that Dr. Jones summarized it in the sense that, you know, the best practice, and if we asked what her preference was, it sounds like she would want one, that the biggest obstacle has been funding. And one of the things the state is looking at, or at least some of the people that are introducing legislation, is to actually look at grants to localities to be able to afford school resource officers. So just in the short timeframe and with our meeting schedule, that's the one thing I don't want us to miss an opportunity to discuss supporting legislation in that regard. I know that this is a very foreign type of topic, but it's one that, you know, I think we need to look at and discuss and decide if we're going to support it or not. But there are several topics here. And to me, the one that I don't want to finish quite yet tonight is the fence topic. And I want to ask Dr. Jones, if you had George Rutherford's, would you build the fence tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We felt we needed it last year. Definitely.
All right. So I, do you know how much it would cost to build it tomorrow?
$165,000.
Okay. So Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to fund building that fence. I'd like to do it right now. I move that we, should we ask for it from contingency? Hunter's gone. We probably don't have the money because we keep spending money. I guess we could go through the process of asking city council to dig into the multiple millions of dollars of excess money that is being held right now, right? So Hunter, I'd...
A couple of sources you write. There would be if the city was anticipating having a surplus or does have surplus funds currently, that could be a funding source. We do anticipate having about $300,000 left remaining in our Fund 6D fund balance, which we were going to program in to use in FY14.
Okay. So, yeah, so I would like, Madam Chair, I move that we request on an emergency basis with city council to request up to $200,000 to fund the construction of a security fence around the George Mason, Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School complex.
Second. Is there any discussion about this motion? Yes?
Chairman, I did have the opportunity to observe the council work session last evening. And as you know, we had previously forwarded a request for the council to permit us to dip into our fund balance to the tune of $400,000-some. We could add this to that, and then it would get us in a fund balance position as Mr. Kimball had summarized. Alternatively, I think we could request that the funding come from another source, that the council take it from surplus on their side, to the extent they may have some. And that they are going to put on their calendar for this coming Monday's formal meeting, a budget amendment, which has two parts to it. One is a city budget amendment, and the other is one that we had requested previously. So they are moving. We could get this in there pretty quickly, I think. But there are some questions already outstanding with regard to our existing requests that I think are needing to be answered adequately for them. I think they may have some other questions about this. But I just want to offer that as a point of information in our consideration of how quickly this could get done and what we'd need to do.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments on the motion we have on the table?
So if I could clarify the motion, it absolutely is my, and this is the problem with not having written motions, but absolutely is my intention that this be drawn from the city's surplus. So I appreciate that, Mr. Sharp. And I think that it makes sense to just augment our request and have the superintendent available to answer questions in that regard.
Surplus or fund balance? Surplus would imply extra funds this year because we have more revenue than we had expected. Fund balance would imply that 22 or 23 percent.
So the original $400,000 that is before city council?
Before 82, yes.
82. That is to reduce our existing...
Our...
Operating fund balance.
Fund balance.
Yes.
And it is your advice that you want to go ahead and reduce it further?
It is not my advice. It is one option before the board. It would knock it down to $100,000 to be carried forward next year. Likewise, it would either be that we, you know, could spend the fund balance or we're asking for additional city appropriation.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
So the reason why I seconded Mr. Rasmick's motion is I fully agree with you. The prior motion that we made on these other items were expenses that were basically asking permission from the city to re... that were basically asking permission from the city to reallocate existing school resources, school funds that we already have for purposes that we need. The item before us this evening, the motion before us this evening, is to make an additional request for an item that we did not anticipate a need for, that is exceptional and is of a nature that needs to be done in a timely manner. So I would, while there are two budget motions, amendments to budget, they are two distinctly different purposes. And I think it is appropriate, given the financial situation in the city. And I fully expect the city council to be very magnanimous on this, that they would want to fund this and they would want to do so swiftly. So I think that would be, thus the reason I thought that Mr. Rasmussen's motion is a totally appropriate one and I think was the best course of action in how to fund it.
I just want to be sure that we're all clear, that you want to fund it from the city's current fiscal year surplus?
That is correct.
Surplus is the word you used. Okay.
That is correct.
Just want to be clear, we're all on record with what that is. Mr. Sharp?
Could I ask, in conjunction with your consideration of how this would work, and I understand you've thought about this as something you might have done last year. You've built up a body of considerations of how this works. Would there be some additional expense for ways to monitor who's coming in, who's going out, so that you could continue to have a, I'll call again, a welcoming atmosphere for parents and members of the business community, others who would be coming to the schools for legitimate reasons? Are there additional expenses beyond the construction of the fence that because you constructed the fence, you'd now have to add some additional procedures that would add some, that would continue the welcoming atmosphere for the community?
And we have discussed this thoroughly because we think it's really important that, and we kind of equate it to those urban kind of private schools that still do feel really friendly and are gated. And I worked at one for six years and, you know, having somebody at the gate is key. And we both acknowledge that because you don't want a gate just automated, that's just opening for anybody who drives up. But we do feel like right now, we could, if we did this tomorrow, we would take probably one of our security people at GM because one of the things they do all day long is run around trying to see if the buildings are, the doors are shut and trying to secure that building. So, and it's interesting that you ask that because as we talked with our security and professionals, they gave us an example of securing the Pentagon, you know, which was, and they said that you would be surprised how much encroachment they've had at the Pentagon. Originally, it was from a subway and then it was, and that it was moving the perimeter farther and farther and farther out. And they were talking to us about this very issue that what we're doing, so moving our security person out of GM to the gate, we feel like would not jeopardize GM at all. And it would make it very welcoming and that would be, instead of having at that front desk, but I mean, we wouldn't still have somebody there because we have two plus a resource officer. But we actually could put that person at the gate and because we think it's important, too.
A question I have is, and I'm on board with this, I think it's something we need to do. But the question I have is, we have other expenses we might need to have here in the short term for the addition of security resources at Mount Daniel and TJ, right? And so I just, I wanted us not to kind of piecemeal and nickel on, we want this, oh, now we need this, oh, now we need this, and now we need this. I'm not sure that's the right approach. So I'm kind of wanting to ask the superintendent and our chief financial officer, you mentioned that currently we're forecasting about $300,000 at the end of the year. If we needed to add personnel, security personnel at those other schools, would that be a source of funding for those personnel for the second half of this year? And then we would, in our budget process, look to next year? Is that a way to do that? I just don't want to, I want to be ordered and smart about how we do this. Yes? Yes? Answer?
I can actually answer the dollar amount. If we were staffing, let's say we did four people between now and the end of the school year and it was unarmed, it actually would only be around 70,000 total. Because you pay an hourly rate.
Okay.
Total. So it's not as expensive unarmed for a well-trained person is what you actually think it is. And that's why in Alexandria, they actually do not use their police officers to man their police officer desk. They hire security so they can have that person out in the field.
Right.
So that would be the expense. If you were talking about that 300,000 and taking it down farther, it would be about 70,000, right around there, 75,000.
Okay, so if that was something we were going to do quickly, we could find money within the constraints of our current operating budget to pay for that for this rest of this year?
Yes, we could. Yes, we could.
Thank you. I like a short, concise answer. All right, anything else before I call the vote on this matter? All right, let's have a vote on Mr. Rasmussen's motion to ask city council to provide funds out of their current year's surplus for fencing around the George Mason, Mary Ellen Henderson campus to improve security and safety work and our staff on those. Yes?
Yes. Just, may I make just a friendly suggestion? And that is that perhaps the request should be, as opposed to the board dipping into its fund balance and using fund balance, that it's simply that the board would request additional city transfer this year because, and not be directive about where they find the money.
Okay.
Fine, they can go wherever they want.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I amend my motion?
Yes, you may.
Actually, I don't even think I specifically said, so I'm just asking for city, yeah, okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion to state that...
All right, so the motion is up to $200,000, city council...
Transfer.
Increase transfer, they can figure out where they'd like to find those dollars for fencing.
For fencing.
All right, very good. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed or abstentions? All right. Thank you, colleagues.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So I'd also like to make a motion authorizing the superintendent to expend from our existing fund balance up to $100,000 for additional security staff. Additional unarmed security staff if she deems it necessary during the rest of this school year.
All right, before we go any further, just because I'm on a kick about being clear tonight. Do you really want that to come from our fund balance? We just, the conversation we just had was that we could find this within our current operating budget and wouldn't have to dip into our fund balance. So...
Oh, it's in our current operating budget? I don't think so.
I, that's what I thought we were just discussing was this about $70,000 and we look like we're going to have a little bit of extra at the end of the year and...
As you may recall, Mr. Rasmussen, at a previous school board meeting in late November, early December, the board did approve a motion that authorized the superintendent to spend up to $170,000 for additional staffing. And at this point, we have not exceeded that, and this could actually fit within the parameters of that prior authorization.
Okay, so does that mean we don't really need a motion to do this?
Actually, you do not.
Okay. We have the wherewithal to do that without a motion and a vote.
That being said, I mean, if the board, you know, obviously feels very, very strongly about this issue and wants to go into the record and to make a statement, you know, a motion certainly would not be any harm. And it would then permanently go into the record that you are on record as directing the superintendent to look into this.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion. Clarifying the superintendent that the board authorizes her to use the previously approved $170,000 for staffing to be used for security upgrades or personnel staffing upgrades at our schools during this calendar year.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Hyland. There's a second. Is there a discussion or question? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question for the superintendent. Do you not anticipate needing the money that you haven't spent for the rest of the school year for staffing?
You know, that's a hard question because, I mean, I look at, and we have enrollment numbers on here, we look at TJ, we enrolled 20 kids, we only had three that moved out. And it all depends on the needs of children.
Okay, but right now, you don't have an identified anticipated need that this would basically defund.
We added another staff last week, and that's where we are right now based on today.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's a hard question, just because we don't know. Yeah, yeah.
You get all the hard questions.
So we may be coming back, is what I'm saying. I hope not, but it's been a very unusual year for hiring, I mean, just meeting the needs.
Okay.
And that's fine.
It's robbing Peter to pay Paul. If you staff it out of the 170, we still have remaining fund balance that we can make further appropriations front of necessary, right? Okay.
All right, is there any other question or discussion on this?
Well, I would ask the superintendent and Mr. Padilla, if you had this sum of money to spend, would you spend it first and foremost on security personnel? Or would you install some of the video and, I suppose, other equipment? For example, to have warnings if doors were a-jawed, would you want to do that instead? I mean, are we, I am concerned right now that we are doing, we are trying to do something rather than to do the right thing. And I want to be very sure that we're not doing security theater and that we're actually doing what will be most effective, both for the safety and education of the kids. So I think we need to put a little break on this activity and think it through.
I will say, in response to like the fence, this is something that I've been coming with almost every single year, to some extent just internally. And it's always been, well, we're going to, you know, we're going to look at George Mason and Mary Ellen campus when we get to the construction part side of it, which is always many, many years out. And now, if we're at an opportunity where we can actually do it, I'm very much in favor of it. But obviously, you can't, we can't, that's one layer. Do all the electronic security, you don't want to invest too heavily in that right now because we are going to be tearing down George Mason or renovating it or whatever that comes about in the next few years. And you can't take that equipment with you.
Right, but if personnel costs will be burned up, too. So if you had to spend $10,000 a year on security, regardless of the fate of the building, that money is going to be gone. So don't worry about stranded investment. Just what's the best allocation of a fixed sum of money for security? What's the best payoff?
Well, and I might, I mean, we even investigated with our construction company, with Arcatis, which we haven't talked about tonight, even bulletproof glass because, and so I can tell you that's $75 a square foot. And then we talked about what it would be to secure a whole building. You know, and then you start looking at the number of windows you have in a building and is that even reasonable to be able to secure a building like that? So I mean, there are, I would say the one expense we have that we would like to get fixed in addition to staffing, I think at Mount Daniel and TJ would be very important, critical, because there isn't anybody there. We really don't have anybody right now. Where at least at MEH and GM, we do have something there. But the intercom system at MEH is a piece, I think, that's on our list. And that's what, 20, 24?
About $10,000.
Yeah. It's, and that is because they can't, if somebody's out there and they buzz in, you can't talk to them, you can't really, because of the proximity and how the building's built. So that would be the only other piece I think we've talked a lot about that we know we have to do, we have to fix our intercom system.
And that can't be done within the confines of the current budget?
Well, that's what we're trying to do. And I'm going to be honest, our budget, which I know Mr. Kimball will tell you, is like this, and it's staffing. You know, we've grown, I mean, when we were running the numbers today, we're over, you know, we're just under 6%, we're about 5.5 after, from where we were last year. So it's all staffing and that budget is very stretched. As well as we have to remember, we're in the middle of construction projects. And we want to make sure that we're very careful about, you know, how we use our maintenance money as well. So...
Yes, Ms. Modisca?
I fully appreciate the sentiment of what Mr. Rasmussen is raising. I believe our superintendent, in our current capacity, has the authority to take this action if she deemed it appropriate and necessary. But I appreciate the sentiment in which it's being offered. And as such, I feel, you know, duly inclined to support Mr. Rasmussen. At the same time, Mr. Castillo, what you're raising is absolutely appropriate. We learned so much more after Columbine. We learned more after Paducah. We learned more after Littleton. And we will learn more after this incident. And while we've been sitting here, I've been making a list to myself of all the various entities, both federal, state and local, that are looking into the question of best practice and how to be most effective in ensuring a safe and secure school. And so I think this is an ongoing dialogue that the board's going to have to have. We'll have the superintendent and Sevi come back to us at another time with a more comprehensive plan. And every time there's an incident, I think it is a reality check for us all that we have to be diligent, that if Mr. Padilla has needs, those needs need to be funded and not swept from year to year. And that he needs our support. And he knows what needs to be done and we're going to learn new things, though. So I also want to, before we move off this, raise one issue that unfortunately I haven't heard raised this evening, and that is the notion of bus security. And this is something that I know we have some members of our community that have asked us about a couple of times. We've talked about it at our last board meeting, drivers that are driving by buses. And so if we're going to look at safety and security, we have to also do it holistically in various places where students are. Sometimes they're in our buildings, sometimes, as Nancy knows, they're on the bus. And they're on the playgrounds. And so there isn't just one place we're trying to keep safe and secure, there are many. And it is our duty to keep them all safe. So please, board, make sure that you have ongoing discussion about the bus. I know we came up with some ideas before, that there may be some vehicles out there, but please just don't let that get swept under the rug.
Thanks, Ms. Modisca. Any other comments?
I would say that also scheduled on next Monday's council meeting is in accordance authorizing the placement of cameras on school buses so that this kind of violation can be recorded and appropriate sanctions be issued to the owner of the vehicle. And revenue raised for the city and for the schools. This type of activity would not...
Would not be any additional expense. It will actually be a net revenue gain for us.
Yeah, and I want to recognize Mr. Sharp for his diligence on that topic. He's really owned that to the benefit of our city and our students and our schools. I'm going to make one comment and then we're going to call the vote for this. And what I'm going to say is, while I appreciate Mr. Rasmussen's sentiment on this one, I won't be voting for it because I feel the need for us to not be slow but to pay attention to putting a plan in place for what needs to be done, short-term and long-term. The fence, yes, that makes very good sense to me, there seems to be no question about it. But these other items, my preference would be that, and it doesn't need to take that long, we'll be back together the 22nd, we'll be together the 17th for that matter. Or we could be together next week earlier if we needed to be. But I really would like you guys to come to us with a plan that is well-thought-out and defensible. Do we need more people at TJ? Is it better to do this thing at Mary Ellen Henderson? Like, what needs to be done now and what are you putting in the budget for next year? I don't want us to be perceived by the community or by our colleagues in city council as being hasty before intelligent on this topic. So that's just my perspective on this. Yes?
The only thing, I just want to make sure everyone understands. All I'm saying is that I want the superintendent, this is the point of my motion, I believe she's already empowered to do this, basically.
She already has it.
But I just want her to have the sense of a board that, and this is why I specifically said unarmed, that if she feels like it's necessary to staff, and especially at Mount Daniel and TJ, with unarmed security staff in the meantime, that I would support that. And I think the board should as well.
I think she already has that authority. I don't think we need a motion to do that. But there is a motion on the table and so we must vote on it. And so all in favor of that, would please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No. So what was that vote?
Four to three.
I think four to three. Should we do a roll call just to be sure? Let's do a roll call just to be sure.
That's for a roll call.
Yep.
Mr. Castillo?
No.
Ms. Hyland?
No.
Ms. Carney?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
And Ms. Modisca?
No.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rasmussen, for your leadership on that topic. Truly appreciate that. Now, are we done with this topic for today?
I think so.
This will be a recurring conversation. And to Ms. Modisca's point, not just today, and two weeks from now and the next 30, 90 days, but over time. If we're diligent, yes?
But just to reiterate, the fact that the motion failed doesn't change the fact that the superintendent has the authority to do what Mr. Rasmussen...
fact that the superintendent has the authority to do what Mr. Raznick suggested, should she deem it necessary.
Absolutely.
She's got the authority, she's got the money, so she's not being prevented from doing anything, we just, I mean, obviously didn't think that the additional authority was needed.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, so that, you know, people don't think we just voted down letting her do this if she thought it was necessary.
No, she has that authority. My hope is that she and Sebby will come to us with a cool little plan, that will help us understand what we're gonna do this fiscal year, where we're gonna get the money, what we're gonna put in the budget, so, cool.
Well, but, while we're clarifying, because it's important to me-
Yes.
I hope the superintendent isn't discouraged to not do it if she feels like it's necessary, because the board just voted five to two against it. So if you feel like it's necessary, I hope you'll do it.
I think we hired this superintendent because she'll feel completely comfortable doing what she thinks is right. And with that, we're moving on to the next topic. I'm gonna invoke my authority of office for that. Okay, the next topic on the agenda is a discussion in first reading of, on the topic of a student liaison to the school board. I'm gonna ask my colleague, Mr. Lawrence, on the right-hand side here, if he would introduce that topic, because he has taken a special interest in it, and done a good deal of work over the last several weeks. So John, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Two questions. First, do we need a motion to stay in business past 10? I can't remember the rules.
You asked for-
That's a norm we adopted, but I don't know if that's something we need to vote-
Okay, no, we had something like that on planning commission, and I just-
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so. I wish we would not be doing business past 10, but tonight we're-
For the record, we're much cooler than planning commission.
I think if someone raised an objection, we would take it.
Okay. And I'll ignore that, but I'll throw a rock at your house as I go.
You'd separate it.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll need a Jones seat next month.
This issue came up back in the, in the fall, both Mr. Raznick and I raised the idea, there are other school divisions that have a formal student representative who is the representative to the school board. They obviously don't have voting rights, but they are, you know, the official liaison between the schools and the school board. And frankly, and one of the reasons we made a change earlier for the ESOL committee was to get two George Mason students who have expressed interest in being on the ESOL advisory committee. So I think the idea of getting more student participation and involvement is good at every level, including at the school board level. So what we did was, I gave Dr. Jones some language from, I think, Fairfax, and she amended it, and that's what was on board docs. What you've got here is, I made a few changes after talking and emailing with some of you today. The main changes here are, in discussion with Mr. Castillo, the idea was that, rather than asking the Student Government Association to, you know, nominate from anyone, maybe the principal involved to nominate, you know, a slate of students from which they could choose. And the only other real change that I made was making it possible for the student representative to participate in some closed sessions. Obviously, not anything that would, you know, cause us legal problems, nothing to do with personnel, but, you know, if we really want to give somebody the feel for what it's like to be on a school board, what a school board does, I think that should be an option. I'm not sure how often it would be invoked, but, but I thought it should be in there. So the idea here is that it would be for a one-year term, beginning July 1, and obviously, you know, with summer break, their participation may not be that big over the summer, but then they would go for the entire school year. What I would hope, since we're doing this in the middle of the year, is the first person who's nominated, and obviously, the school board would have to vote on whoever is nominated to approve it, but whoever's nominated now would serve not just till, you know, July 1, but would serve through the end of the 2013, 2014 school year. Because I think we either do that, or we really wait until July 1, because having somebody serve for four months, I don't think would be very helpful. So with that, any discussion, questions? I know there's, you know, people raise concerns about, will there be active participation? And I think that's something we have to see, we have to, you know, also make sure that we bring them in, don't just sit them down and say, you know, go ahead and, you know, you're 17, 16, 17, maybe 18, and, you know, you should feel free to speak out whenever you want, because that's not necessarily what's, what's going to happen.
All right, so what I'd like to do with this matter, if you could just sit tight for one minute? Is, if we could get a motion on the table about this, and then we'll have discussion and vote on the motion. All right? So would anyone like to make a motion on this topic?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would like to move that we waive first reading and approve second reading and adoption of bylaw 2.15 student liaison to the school board as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Raznick. Is there a second to that? All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Now, are there any questions, comments, or discussion on the topic? I'm gonna start on, I'm gonna start on this end. You've already spoken. Karen?
I intend to support the motion, unless I hear a very convincing argument, otherwise, I've been in favor of this for a very, very long time, and I want to thank both of those who have brought this to the cusp of our meeting this evening. And I do want to say that I would see, to the very extent possible, welcoming this person as a member of the board. You know, including, I was very impressed at the VSBA meeting that we attended in, in November, a rather large group of students who were already members of boards elsewhere, were gathered and discussing best practices for their operations, and what they, what they wanted to be pursuing in their activity. And I would fully support availability of expenses for students to attend conferences of that sort, just as board members have that ability to draw on some expense funds for our, for our training and those kinds of activities. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Ms. Castillo, do you have any comment or question?
Could I, could I take a pass for the time being?
Absolutely, you may. Ms. Hyland, anything?
Nothing really, I'm supportive of this.
No? Greg, anything you'd like to say?
Only a thank you, John, I very much support this, and I don't, at first I had reservations about the closed session thing, but with the discretion of the chair, I can see, you know, a perfect example would be like discussions of hiring a superintendent, or personnel matters of that sort. There may be, the opportunities may be very limited, but I can see where it would be possible. So I support it, I think we should pass it at once.
All right. I'll make a comment. I'm gonna support this, but I will say that I have, and I've told Mr. Lawrence, is a little bit of skepticism about it, and that is just simply based on my experience with our own gifted and talented committee. We've had student representative, all the years that I supported that, I think there were two or three individuals, different individuals, that I saw in that role. And while those students were just as smart as they could be, and the best of the students that we had at George Mason, and they routinely came to those meetings, they didn't offer much in terms of engagement and input. And so I would say I'm gonna support this, but I'd sure like someone around here to figure out how to make sure that this individual gets integrated, feels comfortable, understands what kind of input we want from them, so that they can be a meaningful part of this. I don't want this to be style over substance. I'll just make that comment. And then, I see you, John, I'm gonna let you go last. Is there anything else down here before I let John talk, and then we'll call the vote?
I did, I did, I'm sorry. I did share with Mr. Lawrence, I have some reservations about the one-year term. For my own part, I think about how, and Mr. Castillo, and John, you certainly have been in prior city service, but onboarding to a school board takes time, and once you start to get to know things, then it would be time to depart. And so, to Ms. Carney's, and, you know, Charlotte, we've had this conversation, it just takes a little while to figure out a school board, the culture, how to contribute, and so, you know, this is fine, I would like to see two things. It doesn't have to be done tonight, but just for future. I think that when a student participates in closed session should be part of the policy. It should not be left to the discretion of the chair, with all due respect to the chair, because we need to have consistent policy about when that person is treated. So maybe, when, if Greg was chair, he wanted the mental of the time, and maybe when Susan was in, she had a slightly different take on that. I think it should be school board policy, because closed session is serious business, by the nature of the fact that we go into closed session outside of the public sign. So that would be my first observation. And the second would be, I look forward to, the board looks forward to more information from the superintendent on how the student would be on-boarded, what the orientation would be, so that we would have a clear, defined role for them, and they would be empowered to be successful. And I think without giving them a clear sense of, here's what you can do to contribute, here would be the chain of communication, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do, it will set up a situation where invariably a student will maybe do something they're not supposed to, or the board will disappoint in terms of their experience. And I think each and every one of us has had a time where, for example, I cannot speak for the board, I can only speak for myself, and I know that. So those kind of basic norms would have to just be communicated, so-
Okay.
The folks that were, the student reps that were at VSBA are fantastic students and individuals, and it's a great experience, absolutely fabulous, and I had a chance to address them. And I think when you talk with those students that really have an engaging experience, it's highly structured. And what I have reservation about for this is the lack of structure. It's good intent without all the stuff behind it to really make it successful for the kid.
Go ahead.
You know, I really appreciate listening to what Ms. Modisca just said. The two comments that she made was the reservations about the year term and the structure. And I think it's very difficult, though, for high school students, particularly juniors and seniors, to give more than a year, unfortunately. And I think the best qualified student to sit in this position would be a senior, but a senior would be less likely to have the time to do it, and then junior year is very difficult, so I don't know, you know, I see some potential pitfalls in this, in that sense. And also, I think that, you know, without any real structure, then it would be, it potentially could be someone just sitting here and not really getting much out of it. And I would hate for it to seem like, you know, just something that they were looking for strictly as a way to receive some community service hours, and not to, you know, be as the people that you all saw at VSBA, and how engaged they were, you know, be, I'd like it to be a really meaningful experience. Not that I'm not supportive of it, but I do understand those, you know, comments.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hyland. Yes.
No, I agree, I mean-
Oh, are you ready now?
Can I just go before?
Oh, please.
Yeah, if you could.
I think, Ms., I think Ms. Modisca and Hyland raised, as the father of a junior, plus the fact, I think we have to make it absolutely clear to whoever steps up to this, that this is, I mean, if I could get community service hours for this- And then I could maybe sell them, but-
A black market.
This is, this is not for, I mean, with the experience on the GT committee-
Yeah.
I mean, this is like serving on every advisory committee on steroids to do this-
Yeah.
Especially as we go into the budget season, and so, well, I think this could be an amazing experience for the right person. I think people need to understand very clearly what they're buying into, and, you know, the one year versus two, somebody who can go two years, I think that's a subset of that
A subset?
One group that we just saw. With respect to the closed session, I think Ms. Modisca raises a good point. I think we, I didn't read the statute clearly enough, which, which the enabling statute does say that nothing shall prohibit any school board from excluding the non-voting representative from executive sessions or closed meetings, so it is something we can either fix by policy, and, you know, maybe a way to split the difference, and I have no affinity for this idea one way or the other, is maybe it's by a majority vote of the board, I don't know, or we do have a policy, but I worry that, would our policy capture all the potential scenarios? And I don't, I don't know that. Maybe we could say, they can participate unless there's a vote that says they can't. That could be a thorny issue, because, you know, these are people who are in the, in the schools.
Right.
And so, they, they're, my inclination is that it would be easier for all concerned to not have them, as it will be in the closed sessions, but I understand that takes away from part of the experience. So those are, those are my thoughts. I do support it, but I think for it to work for everybody, we're, the vetting process will have to be pretty, pretty robust.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I have one more question. Okay, I'm gonna come back to you.
Yes, so I have one more thing, and I'm sorry that I'm just thinking of this now as we're sitting here, but thinking about the seriousness of this commitment, it would, and maybe you all have considered this, but would the student representative be paid? It would appear that they would not, but in large measure, this would be much like a job for that student, who would otherwise forego the ability to have outside, you know, is it an internship? I mean, have you just kind of thought about that a bit? Because I know in some other jurisdictions, they do pay their student reps.
But that can't be community service that way.
Right.
As long as they don't make more than we do.
Agreed.
And actually laugh.
Yeah.
Just for the record, just for the record, up until recently, after taxes, I just, $73 a month was what I received, so there you go.
Right.
Yeah, we, we actually, it was in the language from Fairfax, where they were getting paid for every meeting, and they would have been paid more than the members of our school board, and so I thought that that was probably not the best, so that's why the language doesn't appear. But also, we added the community service aspect, because that's huge at George Mason, and I really think that there isn't a need to pay somebody, because I think the right student is going to be somebody that's highly engaged at the high school, that's part of our community service program.
You also may be in violation of child labor laws, which prohibit work after a certain hour in the evening.
Mm-huh.
Okay.
I don't know how they work that in Virginia, but they- No, no, I mean, it shows up on, it's, I don't know if it shows up in the code where it's allowable, or, but, like Fairfax pays, but, I don't know, Hunter, we'd have to look at that. But that's why we took it out.
Right. Thank you for that, Ms. Modisca. Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Okay. I appreciate the comments. In terms of the closed session, I mean, I'd be happy to take it out now, and then revisit it later, because I think, A, you know, we're not gonna figure it out now, and I think, rather than prescribing when they can be in, I think what we'll probably find out is it's easier legally to say when they can't be in, and say, you know, they can't be in here, here, and here, and then if we want to say, then a majority vote of the board, or that after all those are out, then to discretion of the chair or the superintendent, you know, then I think it would be, it would be easier. But I think we'll more rule out when they can be in, rather than be able to define when they can.
Right.
And I said, that's why it was in the code, but whenever we put the language on board docs, we, I took it out, and that was a decision that I made, just based on knowing what we discuss in closed session, that I just felt like that was opening us up, and we can invite the student into closed session when it's appropriate, and because I posed the agenda in advance, we do have meetings where we're hiring people, that it's very appropriate, and we know. And I think that, I would say 99.9% of the time, I know what we're gonna talk about in closed session, and could know when it was appropriate to invite them in, without having it as part of the policy.
Right, right. For example, I would hesitate to involve a student in the superintendent's review, perhaps.
I'm sure the superintendent would agree.
Or student matters-
Student matters.
Would be the big one, right?
Right.
Or some personnel matters. I mean, I think, and, and it's one thing, and you couldn't just say personnel matters, because we have routine personnel matters like we did this evening, right? This person's resigning, this person's being hired, and those things, I think, are perfectly fine, but we have personnel matters that are not, and we have, you know, so, I, thank you for offering that, John, I was gonna request it, and so, and we can take some time to think that through more carefully, because while I want this to be a rewarding experience for whatever lucky student signs up for it, that's not my primary concern. My primary concern is that the board have a way to get input from our student population to help make better decisions. Okay? So, we have a motion on the table.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend my motion to strike the second to the last sentence. I'd like to amend my motion to strike the second to the last sentence. Participation of the student liaison in closed sessions shall be at the discretion of the school board chair.
All right. Thank you so very much. Are we ready to take vote on this now?
Just one final comment about the, the structure and making sure that the, the person actually gets something out of it. That, I don't think we can put that in here, that's really got to be a commitment from all of us, to make sure that we actively draw the person in, and, and not just here, but, you know, spend time outside. And what really got me thinking about that was when I met with the two students for the, who were going to be on the ESOL committee. And, you know, they're, they're not, they've been in the ESOL program, they're not in it now. But I said, listen, you know, you're going to be in a room with, you know, twelve parents, probably six teachers, you know, the assistant superintendent, and, you know, quite likely parents, you know, you've known for years, and you might not feel comfortable being completely open. So I said, you know, I want to talk to you before meetings, the, the chair, Jeanette, would talk to you, so that, you know, you can get their input, but without them having to, you know, sit next to a teacher they had and say, well, this is something I really hated about the program, because they're not going to do it. And then they're not going to feel like they're contributing, and they're not going to enjoy it, and you're never going to get somebody else who's going to want to apply. I mean, we haven't had somebody there for three years. And I, I think we need to, you know, build it in, so that somebody says, you know, I was on that, and, you know, it was enjoyable, I actually got to contribute. And, and they were concerned, they said, well, what, what do we know about ESOL programs at pre-K? And my attitude was, well, what do I know? I wasn't an ESOL student, my son wasn't, but, you know, you've done this, and a lot of it is, is common sense, and just thinking the issues through as you hear them. But a lot of it comes down to, you know, us making it, you know, worth their while.
Uh huh. Yep, I totally agree with that, and them doing their homework. So, okay, now, are we ready for the vote for this?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Point of order, did some, did somebody second the amended motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Thank you. So we have an amended motion, and a second to the amended motion. So now, we'll take our vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, or abstentions? All right. Thank you very much, and John, thank for your leadership on that. I look forward to seeing who we will welcome as our new liaison. Okay, Dr. Jones has brought us the amended budget calendar for this budget session. Please take the floor.
And I'm going to peek over Mr. Castillo-Schneider, because my computer died. On the amended calendar, it's the one that we sent out, and all of the comments from the school board, and you all offered, those of you who are having scheduling conflicts, all of those have been considered inside the calendar. And so, presenting on January twenty-second, so we did move that up. We did realize that the twenty-first is a holiday, and so on the twenty-second, the chamber is booked, the room downstairs is booked, and so we more than likely will be presenting at our, our.
Central.
Central office. And other than that, we did change one of the public hearings to go with that budget work session, too, just trying to consolidate and be able to get that feedback. But again, all of the comments were able to be adjusted in the calendar as requested.
All right. Thank you very much for that introduction and overview. We discussed this last time. I think the changes are what we asked for, so I don't expect there to be a lot of conversation here, but, but are there any questions or comments? I dare you. All right, is there a motion to adopt this calendar?
I move that the school board approve the FY fourteen budget development calendar as presented.
Thanks, Ms. Highland. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wadiska. All in favor? Yes?
I'm sorry.
Is there a question?
It felt so good to approve a calendar that I'm not even going to do this.
I know. No wonder it was so fast.
I guess my only, my only question would be, I'm sorry, is that it does seem that March twenty-eighth work session, session may be lightly intended, but maybe that's just.
That one's not ours, I think.
Yeah.
We're the green.
We're the green.
That's a city council, joint calendar, so we can see what's going on for both sides.
Right. The green things are our primary considerations. In case you were planning to be on the beach at that time. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks very much.
Clarification about the meeting on the twenty-second. I wonder if we could ask for a recording of that meeting, Granica sort of recording, so that we, we can allow the community to see the superintendent's presentation.
Thank you. Good thinking. I appreciate that, Mr. Sharp. All right. Moving right along to approval of the CIP for fiscal year fourteen. Just for the community's knowledge, the school board has already discussed this in a prior meeting, and given feedback on the draft to the superintendent. She has made changes, brought that draft to our work session this evening, where we discussed it and had a lot of questions and back and forth, and will now discuss and hopefully approve the CIP this evening in this next order of business. What happens next is this gets passed over to Wyatt Shields and city staff, who will evaluate including it in the full city CIP that will go to the planning commission, and then on through the process to be approved. So with that, I would turn this over to Dr. Jones to give a summary, if you would, for folks in the city.
And I will say that it is available online through our board docs for those people that would like to preview it, and then we'll also have it on our web, main webpage. It does start and give an overview of the Weldon Cooper enrollment projections that go all the way through two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so you can see what we've based our CIP on. The next page is actually give each school site, Mount Daniel, MEH, each one of those sites, shows the current capacity of the buildings, and when we will be over capacity, and it actually gives you the formula that we use, like eleven classrooms times twenty-two students, which would be max in those rooms. So it lets the community know how we get to our numbers and our capacity numbers. Behind that, there is on page eight a planning schedule. We have a phase one, a phase two, and a phase three. Right now, in phase one, we are working on the TJ addition renovation, which of course was on CIP last year. Cherry Street is just now starting as far as discussions and preparing for that. And then Mount Daniel is showing up on two thirteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Behind that, we do have a George Mason project, and also, we have added the Wing project for Mary Ellen Henderson. And that is something new that was in our CIP, and again, that's driven by when we will reach capacity at Mary Ellen Henderson, and the needs for that. We also, in the CIP, have our planning process, so that somebody can see how it flows, and we do involve our community and large staff input in, on all of these projects. And probably the main page that most people are interested in is page ten, which just gives that overview of what is the project year by year. And FY fourteen, we have in our CIP Cherry Street property renovation. We also have a George Mason year one, which sounds very quick, but it's a smaller amount, and it's for planning, because it does take expense in order to start the planning process. Mount Daniel is also on there, as well as we did have the safety and security fencing, but based on tonight, we'll be more aggressive with that and pull that off. In FY fifteen is George Mason year two, Mount Daniel and track resurfacing. In FY sixteen, we had George Mason year three, which is actually the construction year. Year one and two are those planning phases. System renewals and football soccer replacement. And again, we did work with the city as, as soon as, I think, I can't remember, my days are running together, but I think it might be yesterday or last week, but working with the city, and they, the two hundred thousand on the city side will show up in their CIP as well, so we're sharing in that turf replacement. FY seventeen is when you see the MEH Wing, George Mason year four, that would be completion of George Mason. And again, one of the reasons the Wing is showing up in FY seventeen and eighteen is driven by capacity, when that building will be at capacity. But also, in coordinating that with a George Mason project at the tail end, will be fiscally responsible for us while we have construction in place and on site. And then systems renewal. So, and the addendums give you the longer explanation for each project, the number of classrooms that would be in the George Mason building, to build for the adequate size, and also the square footage, and the price per square foot that we've calculated, our numbers. And that is it in a nutshell.
That is it in a nutshell. That's about the quickest I've heard you talk since our work session, when you were the set fast. All right. Let me just open the floor before we have a motion on this one, to see if there are questions for Dr. Jones, or comments on this that we'd like to take. Anything, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Sharp? All right. There be, yes?
I have a quick one.
Please.
I think many folks will be concerned about the enrollment projections, and I do want to point out that we have, at least as far as Weldon Cooper can get their projections extended, and, and this is a third party, it's not, not just our own interpretation of what, what could happen. But I'll just point out some numbers, that it's not also just this very straight line sort of progression, either. There, there are fluctuations that are built in here that are, that are intended to genuinely reflect the anticipated changes in, in our population going forward. In twenty-seven, pardon me, twenty seventeen and eighteen, that, that school year in K and one, it's showing here reaching a peak of four hundred and two for just those two grades. But then, as you go into the next year and subsequent years, it actually shows for, for K and one, a reduction in, in the number of pupils in those two grades. So, you know, there is, there is a reflection, it, it isn't just a, this is now at, at one level, and it's going to continue rising, you know, till the end of time. There are, there are.
It feels that way.
There are considerations that are built in here that are intended to reflect the, the anticipated changes in the population. Now, you will see at, as, as a total, overall, that there, there is a steady, steady increase, you know, throughout most of this. But it's only until the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year that there's, there's a small reduction in the overall total. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I appreciate you pointing that out. We did spend an awful lot of time both forecasting student population ourselves, in conjunction with our colleagues on the city side, and in having the Weldon Cooper Center down at the University of Virginia, give us a forecast to make sure that we were doing a good job, and we feel, forecasts are never right, but we feel as good as we can possibly feel about a forecast. So thank you for that, Mr. Sharp.
I guess I would just follow up on that observation that Mr. Sharp made, with the observation that those twenty eighteen, nineteen, and beyond years are a little more speculative. So, I mean, while, while I hope that it will keep climbing, I guess your mileage may vary. I have one question for the superintendent, and, and it came up in the work session a little bit about the idea of maybe dual-purposing certain facilities for MEH and George Mason, like, for example, food service facilities. And it occurs to me with the, with the new Mary Ellen Henderson planning, the design is, in page eight, is going to twenty fifteen, sixteen, and George Mason's design, did you say it goes into twenty fifteen? By, to, to make a long story short, it occurs to me, it might be helpful if we could make the design for Mason and MEH overlap a little bit more, so that we might knit together common facilities if and as appropriate.
Right.
And if we don't do that, we might lose out.
Okay.
But otherwise, it's a fine document.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Raznick, do you have questions or comments?
Just one comment. Madam Chair, I want to thank you. One of the things that I think that is very important for us to start recognizing is that our approach of continuing to put Band-Aids on our existing facilities is not going to work much longer. One of the most striking things in the CIP to me is just how quickly we're going to hit capacity in schools that we're continuing to put Band-Aids on. And it's just not going to work. And I want to thank you for looking at our existing properties, modeling what worths would be, their values would be, in terms of options we may have, and I commend you for that, and I hope that the community will engage, because I'm telling you right now, we have got to start thinking outside of the box if we're going to solve these facilities problems. And I know that, I don't know if he's crazy or bored, but he's certainly committed, and that is, I see, once again, Councilman Duncan is sitting out in the audience. I don't think he's missed one meeting since he's been on the board. I mean, on the council.
His kids are grown up.
But, but I noticed recently in some comments in the press, that he also said that he was welcoming this approach of having to think outside of the box on our facilities. We just, it's not going to work anymore. And so while I applaud the CIP itself, and how we're finally getting earmarkers and moving things forward to try to address this, and I'm cognizant of the fact that enrollment numbers can sway, I don't, I, I think we may have reached a point in this city where they're not going to go backwards for a while. You know, this is a, this is a growing metropolitan area, and we're just going to get swamped. And so, we have got to figure out what we're going to do, and Madam Chair, I think that one of the biggest legacies of your chairmanship is going to be that you really did kick off that process of getting us out of that Band-Aid mode.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments or questions about this CIP, or are we ready to vote to approve? All right. Oh, Mr. Sharp, yes?
I also want to echo Greg's sentiments that this is a departure from past constrained environment type of thinking, and I applaud it. I think it's, it's definitely the right way to go. And I want to thank our chair and others who've, who've had the courage to, to go forward with this. And I, while this document itself will discuss the parcels that we currently occupy, and what we anticipate as the expenses for them, I think it also anticipates that we will be going through a process that will examine out-of-the-box solutions on the existing parcels and potentially elsewhere. We do have, and, you know, I will say again, thank you to the, to the city council for providing an opportunity where we have some additional options potentially on the George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson property, and that we have a settlement behind us, or settlement nearly behind us, anyway, as far as our water system dispute with Fairfax County is concerned. And all of that opens, opens the door to, to I think, many more possibilities than when that dispute was still, was still alive and, and kicking. And this, this environment that we're entering into, I think, is much, much more hopeful one, and I look forward to these discussions about the existing properties, but also, you know, what are our, our other things that we could be doing? Including some, some options of, you know, within our educational program. Are there virtual learning environments? Are there, are there technological changes that we should be considering that also have, would have facilities implications? Thank you.
All right. Yes.
May I just follow up on?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Sharp and Mr. Raznick's observations. I, I agree that, first of all, I, I think we should approach the technological issues and look at what a true twenty-first century educational system would look like. I think we have a great opportunity. The second thing I would say is, as we approach this, when, when we think outside the box, I think we should think very broadly outside the box. For example, imagine security concerns in a hypothetical Cherry Hill Park, Mount Daniel. Imagine perhaps we should consider the consolidated parcel of the Mason property as a site for Mount Daniel, both for security reasons and for maintaining the ultimate economic value of that integrated parcel when it can be developed in its entirety. So, we have parks, we have parks that used to be schools, and maybe should be schools again. I would cast a very wide net as we look at our options. And I guess the only other thing that I would observe is that you can get money, but they're not making any more land, and we should be very careful. I think we have gotten rid of land before, and I don't think we've ever been happy with that decision. I think we should approach this next exercise with that lesson in mind.
Thank you for those comments. As you all probably know from our last joint meeting with city council, I echo them. And certainly, there are at least three. And certainly, there are at least three, if not four, instances in the last, well, since I've lived in this city, the last 25 years, where we've made land use decisions that I look at now and say, "Really?", because we would have land for schools that we don't now have. Instead, we have ballparks for Fairfax County, and we have buildings for UVA and Virginia Tech, and parking lots for their cars. And so, thank you for those comments. I appreciate them. All right. Let's call a vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you for adopting the CIP. I will ask the superintendent to submit it over across the wall to the general government side, just for...
I don't think anybody actually moved. Did we?
Didn't we? Do we have a motion in a second? Oh, maybe not.
Somebody made it.
Okay. Let's roll the tube back and ask for a motion to approve the CIP budget.
I move that the school board approve and adopt the FY14 CIP budget as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Highland. Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Now, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And other, any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
I was four before I was against it.
Aye, 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 aye. I would like to remind the community that on the 17th of January, there is a joint City Council School Board work session on the 20-year Integrated Facility Plan and our approach to that. I don't know where it's being held or what time it's being held. Please check our calendar and see. But we will begin to talk about, hopefully, some of these out-of-the-box ideas and about how we can work more closely with our colleagues on the general government side to make sure that our city as a whole has the facilities that our students and our parents and our other community members need to enjoy living here. So, next is approval of notice to proceed on the TJ sprinkler system. I'm not sure why we need to approve this, but I'm going to believe that Dr. Jones will tell us.
We do have two different budgets. One is Task One, one is Task Two. The official approval for Task Two to the school board does not come before you until February. Right now, it's at the, they're in the design phase, and they're still bidding everything out. And then, they will give us a list on Task Two, and then we'll bring that to you for approval to move forward with actual construction. What has happened with Task One is that we know the sprinkler system is top of the list on Task Two. So, what we're asking you to do is to move forward for sprinkler system only on Task Two, to be able to fund that now, because this fire marshal is requiring that be done with Task One. Otherwise, we're holding up construction.
All right. Thank you for that. Summary?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the school board approve a notice to proceed with TJ sprinkler system. Due to the fire marshal's requirement, the project must be completed at one time. Approval allows funding from Task Two not to exceed 3,000 to be used in conjunction with Task One funds.
Thank you, sir. And a second to that. Are there questions or comments? Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed or abstentions? No, thank you very much. Dr. Jones, a construction update?
I just encourage you to drive by TJ. The still is up. It really looks like a building is there. And also, the lights at the high schools. And this all happened last week, so it was a very exciting week, minute by minute. But that's it for construction. I know it's a late night, but it's just, if you haven't driven by, please do. It's fun to see.
Yeah. And I'm sorry that Councilman Duncan just left, because he and I spent many, 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 many baseball games wishing for lights on the field back when our boys were playing ball. And so, that's exciting. Very good. Thank you. Enrollment update?
And again, this is on board docs, and it is available for public view. We are watching our numbers closely. We are having some shifting. And as you know, we do have a request right now that we put forward for more buses. Just to give you an example, because people always say, "Why can't you project? Don't you know which grade levels?" This week at Oakwood, we went for a regular stop, which would normally have about seventy, you know, two kids on the bus, and ninety-one little bodies were there. Because you don't know where these children, when they move in, even if it's an even wash, it changes your bus routes. And so, we're working on adding and adjusting there. And we, you know, of course, you have kids that move out, kids that move in, but it can change the composite. So, for instance, at TJ, you know, grade level sizes are up, because we just happened to get hit on the right grades after the break. So, encourage you to look at those numbers. It's just, yeah.
Okay. And do you want to keep moving along to the Creative Calendar Committee update?
And that's just to let you know, we did have our very first meeting, and it's called Creative Calendar, so we don't confuse it with the Regular Calendar Committee, which that's also getting ready to start. We have a couple of meetings where we set next year's calendar. We'll be bringing that to you. Creative Calendar, the first meeting was just really, what is the meeting all about? Looking at research. And so, we've just started, and I just wanted to let you know that we're at the very beginning phase of that.
All right. Thank you very much. The last item I'll take, which is discussion on interim appointment of a school board member to fill a vacancy. I'm, I guess, happy to say that this board is getting very good at this exercise. My first five or six years on the board, we never had this situation. Now, we have it for the third time, unfortunately, with Jones' departure. I would like to move with all haste, but with a transparent process, an inclusive process, to get this filled, because we are headed into the budget session. So, what I'd like to propose for discussion among my colleagues is that with the vacancy announced this evening, that we kind of use the process we've been using, which is to let folks know we have a vacancy, let them know what we're looking for, ask them to submit qualifications. And I would ask for those submissions by the noon time on Monday, the 21st of January. So that this, okay? So that, I mean, we can make it Friday, the 18th, but I thought people might spend the weekend doing that.
Send it electronically.
And they'll send it electronically, anyway. And then, Tony could provide whatever we received to us, and we could have an agenda item on the 22nd to see what we have and discuss and decide where to head from there based on that. No. Are there any thoughts or questions about that? Oh, and one other thing I wanted to say is that I would encourage the board to make it clear that there are two things that we are particularly looking for in this round, giving the timing. One is someone who has demonstrated commitment to the community through service on a board or commission of some sort, so that we know that there's someone who understands how that works and can get engaged with this quickly. And the second would be someone who understands the budget process, if at all possible, so that they can jump right into the middle of that. And with that, I'll get to you in a second. But is there anyone on this end that has a comment or a question? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
We're scheduled for a meeting on the 17th with council. I wonder if we could meet prior to that meeting, if, for example, that's a 7:30 time, if we could begin 6:30 or 7 o'clock to hear, well, I was going to suggest that we try to build something on this end, but also legislative items. And I think we could have at least two or three legislative items, one on safety, the gun-type issue, and one on the continuing contract-type issues that we could deal with, I think, with some expeditious treatment before the council meeting.
Okay.
That's Thursday, the 17th.
Right, right. Hold that thought. I was, I'm wanting to get people's comments on the process to use for appointing someone to fill this vacancy. But we'll come back to that in a second.
The other thing is, I'd prefer to see us act on this sooner.
So, that was another thing you would like to take up on the 17th?
Yeah. At least to receive the, their submissions of intent at that point. And then, we could potentially act on the 22nd when we meet. And that would still give the person time to attend the training, what the PSBA has on the 24th.
Yeah, I know. I'm aware of that training. Any other comments about that? I'm hesitant to do that, because it just doesn't give much time for people in the community to understand we have the opportunity and to be responsive. But I'd like to hear everybody else's things. Yes?
I'm sorry. I would, I think there is a meshing of process and timing here. I do share Mr. Sharp's desire to accelerate this, and ideally, if it could mesh with the training, as well as with just getting up to speed on the budget, while it would be burdensome on both the applicants and on ourselves as well, I think that's a price worth paying to get this person up and running as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Did June else have something to say? Yes?
Well, just if we're going to put someone on expecting that two days after they're put on, they need to take a day off of work to go down to Richmond, I think we ought to make that very, very clear.
Well, they don't have to.
Well, no. I mean, it's just, it sounds like we're trying to push it, and that's one of the things to meet. I just think, if we expect that, we should just make it clear when we ask people to apply. That's my only point. I'm going to be in Richmond anyway, so it's, you know, easy enough. But if we are going to do that, I mean, it's not easy to get appointed on a, you know, Tuesday at 11 o'clock and then be down in Richmond Thursday at 8:00 in the morning.
Jones doing it?
Every day.
She can do it. They can do it. Thank you for that. Yes, Mr. Sharp?
All right, Madam Chair. So, you know my views on this are...
Yes, I do.
...widely divergent from others in terms of our authority to appoint someone. But let me offer an alternative approach that may actually be something that we could diverge a little bit. I know that our precedent is new with the new people, but what about this as an option? We just went through a process where we had applicants, where we vetted them, where we interviewed them, and we all agreed that we had some strong candidates. Is there any interest in the board? I mean, this is not a process that's not, wasn't transparent. It's a little bit, and this is a little bit of an exigent circumstance with us facing a major budget season and the training issues. Is there any interest in the board discussing, considering the candidates for the previous vacancy?
No.
Why is that?
Because I think there might be other people who are interested this time, and I'd like to have them know.
I think times change and things change. And I'm just really aware that when we replaced Patrick, that there was some perception in the community that it was not a deliberative and transparent process. And this board has always tried really hard to be both deliberate and transparent. We did just have some folks four or five months ago now, and we made a fine selection. But times have gone by. Those people may or may not still be interested. They may not be available. They may be available. There may be other people who are. And so, I think it would, I would not be comfortable with simply going back to that same pool of people and pulling from that. I want to, I'd like to get this done quickly, but I would rather it take an extra few days or a week to get the right person on board and have the community feel supportive of that individual than not. It's not, you know, we don't stretch this out for months and months and have tons and tons of meetings. But that's just my view.
If I might?
Yes, you may.
And I have, I, it's a bit awkward for me to comment on a process for my own replacement, but I would offer the thought.
It's like speaking at your own funeral?
It kind of feels like it. I personally would like to see an open process that would invite those who previously applied, as well as any other new interested individuals in the community to consider service. I would hope, and I might suggest that the board would require, that any member of the public that would like to serve on the school board would be required to attend the joint session on the 17th with the City Council. And the reason I suggest that is the following. One, whoever sits in my seat is going to need to have a full deck of information on the budget, to be as helpful as possible to you. And I would believe that someone who would want to serve in this capacity would already want to go and observe and listen and, you know, see what was going on with those deliberations. I think you should have a transparent process. I think you should allow for timed for that process, but in ensuring that you have someone who's going to be able to serve you best, I think you want to also look for engagement with this upcoming task. And that might be a way to kind of split the baby here a little bit.
Thank you. Ms. Highland?
I agree with that, but I would say that with the short notice, perhaps someone wouldn't necessarily be available for that, to attend that meeting, who still might be a good candidate. So, I wouldn't say that I would preclude them from, you know, that person if they're, you know, qualified in other areas, so. But I think it'd be a great suggestion and recommendation that they try to attend that.
I think to be appointed to a planning commission, you have to attend two planning commission meetings. Is that right? I think I remember that from the day.
Pretty much to be appointed to anything in the city, you have to attend at least one in person, not sitting at home watching it on TV. So, yeah, I think that's a, that's a great idea.
Yep. We have not, we have the 17th coming up, and we have the 22nd coming up. And I think both of those are great opportunities. And to be completely candid, I have to say that I have been disappointed in this process in the past, that we have had people who were so excited to apply for the school board that hadn't been to a meeting and didn't come to a meeting. And I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about that. So, any other comments down this end of the table?
Are we entertaining a motion?
When is the deadline?
I'm not sure. Not sure we really need a motion to vote on that, rather just a consensus of the board. So, I'm going to say that, as I originally have, Monday, the 21st at noon time is when I, that would give people 10 days and a couple of weekends. We could, we could do the 17th, but I'm just kind of, I think that's not enough time for people to, for the word to get out and people to hear about it and to think about it and to put something credible together and present it to us. And I'm not, and I'm not working toward the 24th date, me personally, as one person on this board. So...
I do think we'd have to make it the 22nd, because we're not even open on the 21st, right? I mean, it's inauguration day, Martin Luther King Day.
Okay. So, they could get it to us by 9:00 AM on the 22nd. I want Tony to have enough time to pull it together and send it out to us.
For the meeting on the 22nd.
For our meeting on the evening of the 22nd. So...
So, then, what's the ideas that will have them come to us when for interviews?
We, I think we have to see what we get. I mean, when we, when Patrick was replaced, we didn't do interviews. The last time we decided to do it, I, you know, I think we have to see what comes, and then we'll decide on the 22nd, I think, on whether we do interviews or whether we don't.
I think the last time when we did the process, though, we set out our expectations early on for candidates, as to whether or not there'd be interviews or no interviews, what the application should be. Last time, you were very precise about expectations.
Well, I mean, yeah. Although, I didn't think we, I think we decided that we would wait to see if we were going to do interviews and then decided to do it. But, at any rate...
But what about the questions that you formulated, which I think are, we could use that same set, but would we set them out now?
That was my thinking, would be, just as we did last time, we would announce that we have the vacancy. You need to submit your qualifications to the school board in the form of a letter by this date. These are the questions that you, I mean, I don't think we need to go and reinvent the wheel in terms of the questions and that stuff, because I think that is still valid. So, I think all of that still works. If people are not sure of that, I can ask Tony to send it out tomorrow, and everybody can kind of take a look at it again. But that stuff seems to me to be a bit evergreen.
And would the, so, would the notice include that you were strongly encouraged to attend the 17th meeting?
Or the 22nd?
And would we also say you'd be strongly, a successful candidate would be strongly encouraged to have the 24th free to go? Or would we leave that up to them?
I'm not sure we're going to have anybody appointed by that date.
Yeah.
I'm just not. I mean, if we get, if we get expressions of interest on the morning of the 22nd and get our first look at them on the evening of the 22nd, maybe only a couple of people will apply, and we'll be able to sort it through and decide on something that evening. But when Patrick left, I think we had eight people who expressed interest, and then when Rosario left, we had seven or eight people as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could I, I want to push back just a little bit on the idea of the 17th. Just because, look, the whole reason we're doing this, I still, it's not, first of all, it's not not transparent for us just to appoint. I just want to say that. You know, we're elected, we can make decisions. It's not that it's not transparent. What we're deciding is to have sort of an open application process, and that's fine. I just don't want to blur that line, like we're being seedy by doing our jobs by picking somebody, okay? But that being said, we all know how this is going to play out. We're going to have a group of eight or 10 people who are very interested that would put their applications in tomorrow by 9:00 AM if we made calls tonight, or if it went in the Falls Church News Press. So, I think the 17th is plenty of time, and the truth is, if we're so concerned about them attending the meeting on the 17th, they can certainly get their application in by then. I mean, it's not, I mean, it's plenty of days to do it. So, my suggestion is that we say, "Applications have to be in by noon on the 17th. Strongly encourage you to attend the meeting on the 17th. Here's why." Would incur, you know, and so, maybe we could make a decision on the 22nd and give them the opportunity to go to the board training on the 24th. So, that would be my suggestion. on the 24th. So that would be my suggestion, other than just appointing someone, because I know who I would try to appoint right now.
I know you do.
Yeah.
Although I don't know who that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, you don't. But I mean, I would, I would put their name up right now, but I know it'd be
That's right.
roundly voted out.
That's right.
Can I elaborate on that, Dr. Please?
Please.
Let's think about ourselves for a minute. When do we want this person to be seated with us? Or when do we need them? And should we work backwards for a minute?
So I have some strong feelings on that. I do not want to go into a budget season with six votes. I think that could be a real problem. And I also want the person to have as much runway as they can to get educated on our issues. I am hopeful that we will appoint someone who has either served on the school board or city council and is not going to be coming into this, you know, process, which is going to be a very, you know, busy budget season this time. But I would like to appoint them tonight. So certainly, the 22nd doesn't bother me at all.
This is me rolling my eyes. Charlotte, what are your thoughts?
I actually, I don't want to appoint someone tonight. I'm sorry, Greg. But, you know, let me leave before you. We can't evade.
Here's your name.
Yeah.
But I actually don't see a problem with asking for, you know, expressions of interest by the 17th.
Okay.
It's more than a week just, but, but we probably have a sense, and people who are interested probably have a little idea of what's going on right now because they probably all know that we have a spot available as of tomorrow. So I don't think that's too far outside of, you know, the realm of the possible. And, and, you know, and encourage them to attend that meeting on the 17th. I don't think we can make it, we can't interview them during that meeting because this meet, that's a joint session. And obviously, that's, that's not, you know, we're not setting that type of agenda for that meeting. But at least, you know, they could get, they could learn something and, and get something out of it and express their interest by showing up if available.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's think about this a different way. Let's agree then that we want to appoint somebody on the 22nd. And then we want to tell them that the 24th is available to them so that when that information goes out, Dr. Jones. So, if they're going to submit interest on the 17th and we want to appoint on the 22nd, then the question is, do we want to do interviews or not? If we want to do interviews, we probably need to do them on the 18th. Right? And we could do them on the weekend, the 19th, the 20th, and the 21st. But we could do them earlier in the day on the 22nd. What is the interest of the board? I would think that the weekend of the 18th, 19th, 20th would be
Very difficult.
difficult because that is a long weekend and people may not be ready. But we could have them come on the, we could start our meeting on the 22nd early, 6:30-ish. Do those interviews have discussion and then go on with our regular meeting?
Can, can we?
Or we can decide not to do interviews.
That was going to be my suggestion. Can we at least, if we, if we set the resumes due by the 17th?
Uh huh.
And Tony can shoot them out to us, maybe we can either make a decision at our meeting on the 22nd to appoint from the list, or decide there that we'll have to set up an interview schedule. But I mean, I'm hopeful we may get, like I said, if we get clearly capable people who either served on the school board before or members of council who were very involved, you know, something of this nature that maybe the school board will coalesce around someone, we can make an appointment, not have to go through the process. So, can we entertain that possibility?
Sure. But the only, the only reason that I wanted to leave a little bit more time was I'm cognizant of comments that our colleague, Mr. Castillo, has made, that when Patrick left, there was perception in the community that there was a decision before we ever had a discussion about what was going to happen there. And we tried the last time. We responded to that. We heard that comment from him and from others in the community. And our response was that we were going to have a more complete process, which is why we agreed to have the interviews so that everybody had a chance to get before the board and give it their best shot. And I thought that worked well personally, myself. So that's kind of why I liked the process we did last time better than the process we did the time before. Takes a little bit longer, but at the end of the day, we're going to be talking about the budget for three, four months. And in a couple of days, it's going to make any difference. You know, either they're going to be someone who understands the budget process and we're going to be thrilled, or they aren't. And 48/72 hours a week even isn't going to make really one little bit of difference. You know, it's going to be a fire hose at any rate. And maybe this is the good news. We have Mr. Castillo and Mr. Lawrence who have to be trained in the budget anyway. Right? So we could maybe, you know, have a third person to train them all in, in the budget, if that, if that's what it comes to. So. Any questions, concerns down here?
So, so you're considering not doing interviews?
Greg has posited that perhaps we don't do them.
Well, no, I've, I've talked with Greg at length, but, I mean, it, if you don't do interviews, you're in the same situation you were after Pat, in effect.
Exactly.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, it seemed like somebody was saying it was different. But to me, it's the same because you're asking for expressions of interest and then kicking somebody out on the back end, which is sort of the same thing.
No, I think, I think we can say, we want to know who's interested. They submit. We could say, and then we'll decide if appropriate, we should do interviews. I think that's one way we could do it. I mean, I, one of the things that I think is important is we allow all comers to throw their hat into the ring. As a matter of process, we can review those depending on how much time we do or don't have. We can say we would do interviews or we would not do interviews. I would suggest that if we interview one candidate, we should interview them all. But if there's a clear consensus where everybody says, no, we don't think an interview is necessary, then I would say we can proceed on that basis. That, though, would be my opinion.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out how you do that without, in effect, giving your top three in a public meeting, which, you know, would be a big disincentive for anybody who didn't get named to even be willing to come in for an interview.
Okay. So, yes. Mr. Sharp?
Our meeting on the 22nd would primarily be presentation by the superintendent of her proposed budget.
Yes, sir.
Right. So we could have that as the beginning, the main feature of the meeting. And then once that closes, we would ordinarily not, at that point, go into detailed discussion. We would take it under advisement and think about it and come back later. Well, I think at that point, once that is done, we could then have a period where we would potentially do interviews. We would tell folks that that would be the point at which we, the interviews could be in. And we would have them potentially ready to, to be called to, to come see us. And we do it at that, at that point after the superintendent's presentation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It does. Anything down here? Okay. So here's what I think we just all agree that we would do is, we would make the community aware soonest of the vacancy and our process. We'll pull out the old materials and edit them as we just discussed. We'll ask people to get us their interest, letters of interest by 17th at noon time. We will start the meeting on the 17th early before our joint session as requested by Mr. Sharp at 6:30. Is that what you requested? If that works for people on the board?
It's okay with me. I would want to send out draft of the proposed legislative items so that we could act on them quickly.
Right. And we had the legislative items to discuss, and we'll have a chance to look and see what we've caught in our fishnet that evening. And then we can, on the 22nd, get together for our meeting where the superintendent will present her budget. And we will interview candidates after that, and we will deliberate after those interviews. Yes?
So, all right. The only thing I'm confused about is, so we're committed to the interviews now? We are not going to even entertain the idea that we won't have to do interviews? I mean, if we have 10 people apply and we give them 30 minutes each, that's five hours of interviews after that meeting.
Well, then we'll have to do them on another day.
Have to do what now?
Then we'll have to do them on another day. I thought that the addition of the interviews was a, was a great addition to the process last time. I think that if, if what we want, and I think we said we do, is for everyone in the community to feel like they have an opportunity to submit their credentials based on what we've outlined, then I think that everybody who submits their credentials, if we're going to do any interviews, needs to have an opportunity to meet with the board. Otherwise, as I think happened in the community when we appointed Cecily, there will be people who think that she was appointed because she knew us. Right? And I think there are people that we, we learned in the last time when we had interviews that we maybe didn't know, who had been engaged in the community, who we found were terrific. And we in fact encouraged them to get engaged with us in all kinds of ways. We wouldn't have had that opportunity. I don't think we're going to get 10. In particular, because one of the things I think we did agree was that we're going to strongly suggest that because we're headed into the budget cycle, budget knowledge is critical. And because we want to make sure that it's someone who understands the commitment and what's required to do this kind of community service, that they have served on a, previously in the community on a board or a commission.
Yeah, that's a new criteria.
Right? We've had those in before, but I'd like to emphasize them more strongly. Now, given that, we could look at, if all the people, send them in, if there are people who have no knowledge of the budget process and/or have not served in the community in any capacity at all, we could agree as a board that those are people we would put to the side because they don't meet our requirements, and we would interview the people that were left. That's a way to, to make a first cut in a rational fashion.
So, of course, that'll be the people who said we pre-selected in the last round when, I don't really care who said that because we picked the right person to begin with. My, my only suggestion would be that we don't foreclose the possibility of, on the 21st, if four people on this board say, "I nominate X and Y," and we vote for them and they do it, that we don't appoint them to the board right there. That's the only thing. I hate the idea of us foreclosing the opportunity to appoint a board member if we get somebody who's clearly qualified. I mean, I'm just saying, I know it's hard for you to envision it, but let's just say hypothetically, a, a board member, someone who has served on this board for years decides, you know what, I'm going to come help out in this process. Do we really need to vet them? And if there's a majority of the board that says, you know what, that person was fantastic. I mean, there's how many former board members in the city? Quite a few. And if one of them applied and four of us said, God, it'd be great if he or she was back on the board for this 11 months to help us out. Do we really need to go through a bunch of interviews? I mean, that's why we get elected, to make decisions. So that's the only reason I'm saying it.
I get it. I get it. Charlotte, interviews or no interviews? Interviews and pre-announced? No interviews? Interviews decided on the 17th when we see what we have? What's your feeling?
Can we, were to say qualified candidates will be asked back for an interview after we review the letters of interest?
Uh huh.
So that, that way we could, if there were three or four people we still wanted to hear from and maybe one or two who really didn't meet the criteria, that that would be a fair and transparent way. I mean, that's what happens when you go for a job interview.
Right.
So I don't think that that's terrible. But that way, we don't have to say yes or no to interviews at this point. Right?
Right. Mr. Castillo?
I would, I would agree with that. I do think we find ourselves in an unusual position. And I think we need to make clear, one thing I would suggest, we make it clear in the notice that this is, because I have talked to people who said, well, I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring and get appointed because that's, some people are averse to going and getting petitions signed and whatnot.
Sure. Yes.
But I think this is a really different situation. And so I think we need to underscore, this is a really serious undertaking. Don't do this lightly. Qualified candidates will be invited for an interview. And just make it very clear that we don't have the luxury of time. And I hope that there will be some self-selection of people who are on the fence about doing it. So that would be my idea.
Okay. How about your other gentleman at the end? Interviews for qualified candidates?
Interviews for qualified candidates are fine. I mean, it's, it's not going to get around the people being paranoid and saying it was pre-selected. So if we're, if we're really trying
They just need to watch this tape, if that's what they think. Good God, right? We've taken 30 minutes to discuss interviews or no interviews and how transparent our process is. I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, no. So I think if we're trying to, you know, get out of that, we're, we're never going to regardless. We could have interviews with, you know, 35 people and, you know, 34 of them would be willing to say that. So, yeah, I mean, if, if we can limit it to a certain extent by saying, you know, only people who are qualified, I think that's good.
Okay. Very good. My friend?
Yeah, I would just suggest a way to limit the interviews might be to say that any two sitting board members may request an interview of any, any particular candidate.
Hmm, okay.
And that way, if we have, you know, two who want to interview particular people, maybe we'll end up with four interviews out of 10 candidates, something like that.
Okay. All right. I think that's fair. Okay. I think, I think we know where we're going. Tony, we'll talk tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
We got all those notes down. All right. We probably spent more time discussing this than we, you know, will take on interviews. But thank you very much. That's a good discussion. And that's one of the reasons Joan has always loved this board. All right. Superintendent's report.
I know that you want me to give a 30-minute report, but I think, given the hour, I'll just say, you know, take time to look at fccps.org and all the wonderful activity that's going on our schools right now. It's fantastic. And I'll just point out, we do have a, a meeting tomorrow, joint PTA, members of council, Mr. Baruk also, Mr. Shields will be there as well as Ms. Carney and I, talking about the CIP that you approved tonight and the process and facilities. And we did get a note from Delegate Scott that they are not doing the typical community town hall meeting
Oh, we did it.
This year. It is not slated. They were checking with Senator Sasselaw today, but it does not look like that will, they will have that this year. It may be after General Assembly. And that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that brief report. Next is board comments, and I would also ask that those be brief, given the hour. Mr. Lawrence?
This is more just a point of order. As I was sitting here thinking about the student representative, when I described it, I said, "The first one I wanted to get appointed now and serve through the coming school year," that wasn't in the motion. Does that matter?
I think what we'll do is when we have our candidate, we'll, we'll, when we approve that candidate, well, at that point, we can approve them
Okay.
for an exceptional term.
Okay. All right. No, I
I think that's an easy way to do it. Okay? Because we don't want to put in a policy a one-time thing. All right. Mr. Sharp, do you have any board comments this evening?
Just, I'll, I'll observe that Joan will be joining a core of folks from Northern Virginia who have previous experience as board members. And I think that sets up a very potentially advantageous time for relationship between local governments, boards, and the Board of Education. There is Fairfax County former board member, Chris Bronlick, and also Chair of the current Board of Education is a former Chair of the Arlington School Board, David Foster. So I look, look forward to a very harmonious period and a very active one. Thank you.
Mr. Castillo, do you have board comments this evening?
I, I, I'll just say another fond farewell to Ms. Wodiska, and I, I'm glad we made this last meeting one to remember.
I was just thinking, this is the longest meeting we've ever had in my recollection. I remember one maybe this long, but it was not a good one. We won't talk about that. Mr. Raznick, do you have board comments this evening?
I do, and I won't take too long, but thank you. It was, it's been a great ride and we're going to really, really miss you. Go get 'em. Just real quick, it's going to take just a minute, but I want to say, I was at the Hirschmore Museum today, which is really cool. And they have this Ai Wei Wei exhibit. I don't know a lot about modern art, really interesting guy. And when I went in, there's this big wall of like Chinese characters. I have no idea who it is. There's some people speaking in Chinese on speakers. And I go and read this quote by, and it says, on speakers. And I go and read this quote by, and it says basically that you're, the only thing you have in this world is your name, and it's given to you with all this expectation and promise. And I had no idea what it was, and I go to find out, but basically what it was is that he had collected the names of children who had died in the Szechuan earthquakes in '03. The Chinese government had sort of covered up how bad the damage was. And it was this sort of, you know, artistic memorial to their memory. And it reminded me after Sandy Hook how no matter what things people did, the most poignant thing I thought was the several times that, um, people read their names, including the President. And while I know it's late, this is our first board meeting since then, and I'd just like to take the 20 or 30 seconds or so it would take to read the names of those beautiful children and the courageous staff that died that day.
Please do.
Charlotte Bacon.
Daniel Barton.
Rachel DeVino.
Olivia Engel.
Josephine Gay.
Dylan Hopley.
Dawn Lafferty-Hoxspring.
Madeline F. Sue.
Catherine Hubbard.
Chase Kowalski.
Jesse Lewis.
Anna Marquez-Green.
James Mattioli.
Grace McDonald.
Anne Marie Murphy.
Emily Parker.
Jack Pinto.
Noah Posner.
Caroline Prividi.
Jessica Ricos.
Aviel Richmond.
Lauren Rousseau.
Mary Sherlock.
Victoria Soto.
Benjamin Wheeler.
And Allison Wyatt.
Thank you. Ms. Wodisca, do you have some final comments?
First and foremost, I want to thank you all for your incredibly gracious and kind and just loving, loving comments this evening. That was tremendous and more than I could ever hope for. It just, what a wonderful way to send me off. And, um, and it just puts a smile on my face to think, here we have this board meeting that's going until almost midnight, and we have our wits about us. We are jovial. We have had some disagreements along the way, but if you looked at the general pallor of our face and our demeanor, we're having a good time because we're doing something we love.
That's right.
And we're doing it together. And that is my favorite part of this board, and it is such a great life lesson that you can disagree, but you can do so and find your way back to the, always find your way to a good place. And in closing, I would just say, when I first came to the school board, um, there's a quote that I used to like a lot. It's from Margaret Mead. I'm sure you've all heard it. "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever does." I had no idea how true that comment truly was. And service in your community is truly an opportunity to make a remarkable difference. And I hope that people in our community think about serving on a school board, planning commission, city council, advisory group, and doing it for the long haul because it is without question the most rewarding experience you can possibly have. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Joan. Charlotte?
It's late. I know, but thanks, Joan. And go get them.
All right. I'm going to forego comments this evening. The last item is approval of the minutes of December 11 when all were present. Is there a motion to approve these minutes, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Very good. Joan, would you like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam, Madam Chairman, before the meeting's adjourned, I have one last, last order of business that's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
And that is, on behalf of the school board and the staff of Falls Church Schools, we would like you to take something with you to remember us by, when you go down to Richmond, and I also understand that there can be a pretty tough crowd down there, so don't be afraid to use it.
Oh, darn it, be a gun.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Would you like to move to adjourn the meeting?
Never actually having used my gavel. Here, you know, for the business, I adjourn this gust body.
Thank you, and good night, Joan. All right.